Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is 7:00 PM, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order the July 13, 2015, meeting of the Laconia City Council. We will begin tonight, as always, with a salute to our American flag. Please rise and join Counselor Henry Lippman in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note, for the record, that the minutes tonight are being taken by Deputy City Clerk Stacy Andrews, and would ask her to please call a roll.
Counselor Bounds?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Here.
Counselor Bear?
Present.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Presiding Mayor Edward Engler?
Here. Let the record show that all six counselors are present this evening, and a quorum is established. And let the record also show that the council and mayor are joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and Finance Director Donna Woodman. First item of regular business tonight is adoption of minutes. Counselors, we have three different sets of minutes before us tonight, starting with a special budget hearing that was held on June 22 at 6:00 PM. A motion would be in order to adopt those minutes as submitted.
So.
By Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion of the minutes of the budget hearing held, meeting held on June 22 at 6:00 PM? All's in favor of adopting the minutes as submitted, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and those minutes are adopted. Next up, we have the minutes of the June 22, 2015, regular council meeting, and I believe there was an amendment made to those, was there not, after, per Counselor Bear? And just so everyone's on the same page, this had to do on Page Eight, where the language said Counselor Lippman requested a straw poll to support the safer firefighters with a $50,000 cut to overtime. Following counselors are in favor, Doyle, Bounce, Lippman, against Bullock, Hamel, and Bear. And the new wording that you all should have gotten is Counselor Lippman requested a straw poll to support the safer firefighters with a $50,000 cut to overtime. The following counselors are in favor, Doyle, Bounce, Lippman, against Bullock, Hamel, and Bear. With the informal straw poll being a tie, Mayor Engler was in favor of the amendment to the fire department budget. That's the amended language. So a motion would be in order to approve the minutes of June 22 regular meeting as submitted and amended.
So.
Moved by Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion of those minutes? All's in favor of approval, please raise a hand.
Right.
Vote is six to nothing, and those minutes are unanimously adopted. Lastly, on the minute front, we have had a special meeting on June 29 to, a public hearing on the purchase of the Colonial Theater, and a motion would be in order to approve the minutes to that special meeting as submitted.
So.
Moved by Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion of the June 29 special meeting minutes? All's in favor, please raise a hand.
Right.
Any opposed, and the vote is six to nothing, and those minutes are also approved unanimously. We have no items on the consent and action calendar tonight, so next up would be citizen comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. This would be the appropriate time in the minute, in the meeting tonight, for anyone who is here tonight to address counsel on any matter that is not anywhere on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir. Mr. Wally.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Stephen Wally. Some of you may know me. I'm a resident, a taxpayer, and a business owner in Laconia, and I have been for quite a while. I was here before, talking about the property on Union Avenue that was leased to Lakeport Landing, and I have a question for the council and the city.
May I interrupt you? That item is on tonight's agenda.
Well, this isn't so much about the item as it is about, I'm asking if I missed some kind of legal notice that gave people like myself the right to attempt to purchase that property. Was there ever a published legal notice, like there might be if you were selling an old dump truck or something like that, where we could read and know what the conditions were to go and make, attempt to make a purchase?
No, I believe, and I can be corrected on this, but I believe the council never voted or approved a process that would send the property, if you will, out for open bid. In other words, there was never, there was never a solicitation of open bids from the public. There were two unsolicited offers made on the property.
I understand that, but it seemed confusing to me, because I was, I was taken by Brenda Bear's comments about compassion, and then I got the impression that it was just all about the money. And if it was all about the money, why didn't they just go, you know, to the public and get the money? That's my concern as a taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments about item, any item that is not on the council agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move on. Interviews. We have interviews tonight concerning the planning board. We have, we have four vacancies that are planning board related, two regular positions and two alternate positions. And I'll remind the applicants whom I assume are here tonight that by council rule, the policy and procedure on these sorts of things is to do the interviews at one meeting and do the actual appointment elections at the following meeting. So we will be doing interviews tonight of the candidates for those positions, and elections will be held at our next meeting on July 27. So what we'll do tonight is call each of you up one by one and ask you to introduce yourself and tell us why you seek appointment or reappointment to the planning board, and council reserves the right, obviously, to ask you questions or ask you to comment on matters. So we will start with Warren Hutchins. Mr. Hutchins is the current chairman of the Laconia Planning Board and is seeking reappointment to another term. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I'm Warren Hutchins. I live at 31 Boathouse Road in Laconia. It's in the Weir section. Our area is split between two wards, Ward One and Ward Six, and I live on the side of the road in Ward Six. I'd like to be reappointed to the planning board because it is a real opportunity to serve the city for development, growth, and economic development, which is a particular passion of mine. Serving on the board now, as I have for the last, I think it's three terms, and on the Lakes Region Planning Commission, I've learned a great deal and want to continue to apply that. I would like to compliment several people while I'm up here. First, the council for the involvement that you're showing in our master plan process. As you all know, this is the time for us to update our master plan, and you're supporting it not only with funding for the different sections, but also your involvement. Most of you came to the last community involvement sessions we had, and there were three counselors that weren't able to be there according to their schedule, and they gave me an opportunity to brief them personally on the growth and a tremendous investment that's going on within the city right now, and we appreciate that a great deal. Our last session on economic development, the mayor and Councilman Lippman were able to come and contributed a lot into that chapter. And this is a community master plan. It isn't just the master plan of any one group or commission, and so to have you all involved is very important, and we thank you for that. We also thank you for the appointment of Counselor Bounce to our planning board. He's the liaison, and I'm hoping that after you finish your term here, you'll continue staying on there. He, as you all know, likes to know that the decision is based upon law and that we are applying that law evenly and fairly, and he's added quite a bit to it. And I did just want to commend Scott Myers for several things. One, putting us on television as a planning board, I don't know what our ratings would be, maybe somebody's watching us, but we think it's tremendous, and it allows people in the city to see what's actually taking place so they can form their own opinions and not be susceptible to saying, oh, gosh, that planning board, this or that planning board, that. So I think that's a great move for transparency. And your department heads, each one of them that's involved in the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, I read all those reports, and they're written in the right spirit. They're written in the how do we get to yes. Luke Powell is especially adept at that, of being complimentary and leading people, and it's very, very important. And I think, as you know from my background summary, I've been a officer in three major corporations hiring vice presidents and directors, and Shannon Saunders ranks right up there in her capabilities. She's in a terrible job, because if anything that goes wrong in the nature of code enforcement or things like that, that she gets blamed for, but there's a counter side to it. She's a remarkable individual in terms of her knowledge and in terms of her being able to answer questions and her cooperative attitude. So I did want to compliment the counselors, the counselor, and your staff. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Hutchins?
I'd just like to say thank you for serving and coming forward again.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Hamel.
Just one, what ward do you vote in?
Six.
Okay. Thank you much.
We have a pretty balanced planning board right now, between representatives of the different ward.
Sorry, excuse me.
Counselor Bear.
Uh-oh.
There are three from Ward Six, two from Ward One, one from Ward Five, that's it, none from Two, none from Three, and none from Four.
Oh, it'd be good for applications to.
So it would be nice to have a little diversity.
I will say, though, that the votes and the discussion of the planning boards aren't ward-specific, they're really city-specific, and we do treat all parts of the city equally. In fact, I had expressed the opinion that the focus on the Weirs, the Union Avenue, Lakeport in downtown, I think is, is bad for us. I think we need to think about Laconia as one city and address citywide issues, because we're in competition with the rest of the state, with the rest of New England, and with the rest of the country. And so for us to be inward-focused, I don't think is a good thing. I think we need to join together and look to the outside.
Counselor Bounce.
Thank you for your kind comments first, and thank you for your years of service on the planning board and the planning commission. When does your term, I do this all the time, when does your term on the planning commission expire?
I'm the current elected chairman of the planning commission, and I was just elected a week or so ago for another term as chairman. There's an 18-member advisory committee for the planning commission, and it's filled with great people. And I announced that I was going to serve as chairman for two years, and so this is my second year, and at the end of it, I do believe in succession, and there are capable people to move into that position, and so I'll end up, this will be my last year as chairman. I'll probably continue to serve and come before the planning board to recommend to be a, one of the three voters from Laconia, but not on the executive board.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Edwin R. Bones, also requesting an appointment to a three-year term on the planning board. Mr. Bones here this evening?
I don't see him.
I don't know, Mr. Bones, so, okay. Next up is Charlie St. Clair, requesting a three-year appointment to the planning board. Mr. St. Clair.
Charlie St. Clair, 39 Nessus Street, Laconia. You pretty much all know my history in the city, and I guess my interest in the planning board has come with planning board decisions over the last several years. They've done some good things, but they've done some things that have really turned my head a little bit. So that's why I've applied, is to try to get involved in it and maybe give a different spin on things from, from the whole city's perspective. That's my main, my main concern and my main observations.
Questions? Counselor Lippman. Charlie, which decisions in particular, over the years, have?
Hathaway House, and I don't know which party to put that on, because talking to people in the planning department and talking to people on the planning board, I've kind of got this type of thing, and so that's one of them. And the other one was the amount of time spent on the Weir's Boulevard to make that residential. I'm still not sure where that came from. I know there was, I was told, a lot of work put on from that, but from talking to people that live on Weir's Boulevard and from people who live in the city, they weren't necessarily included in a lot of those decisions that were made. Now, I could be wrong, because I did not attend the planning board meeting where that was decided, excuse me, but from what I understand, again, and this is secondhand, of course, because it wasn't on television, that decision seemed to have been made before that meeting was actually held. That's the impression I've gotten from people. So with that in mind, the fact there were a couple openings, I decided, well, you know, this would be something I'd like to get in and work with.
Any other questions? Counselor Hamel.
What ward do you vote in, Charlie?
Ward Three.
Ward Three?
Unless you change it again.
Pardon?
Unless, it used to be Ward Two until they changed the boundary, so right now I'm voting in Ward Three.
I think you are. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just thanks for coming forward.
Well, thank you, Armory.
Okay. Thank you. We have an application before us tonight from a gentleman who's asking for a three-year appointment as an alternate to the planning board, and that is Michael Lamonti. Is Mr. Lamonti here? Did I pronounce that correctly?
That was good. Thank you, Mike, Michael Lamonti. I live on the corner of Hyatt Highland Street here in Laconia, 122 High Street, right next to the hospital. On my application, I did not put in the ward number. I have voted at Woodland Heights. I don't even know what the ward number is, so.
Five.
You put five in, but what is your street address?
Somebody put that in for me, I think.
Yeah.
That's good.
Not yet, we're just wondering.
What was your address or whatever?
122 High Street. It's on the corner of Hyatt Highland. And I really thought, I got, talked to some individuals in the fusion program, which are helping, you know, working within the city, and I've never gotten involved in a city I've actually lived in for 10 years, and I thought this would be a good way to get started, learn, get to know your master plan, start looking through what the city does. I think a lot of people complain on the sidelines and don't get involved, so I thought this would be a good way to just get started and learn more about the city.
Any questions for Mr. Lamonti? Counselor Lippman. Time commitment to participate, do you have a sense of what that is and the time?
I do. I did look through your meeting schedules. I do have board meetings also. I work for the Newfoundland School District, so those are all Monday evenings. I do most of my facilities-related meetings on Wednesdays, so you're, I believe it was Tuesdays that you have those kinds of planning meetings, and that, at this point, wouldn't be a problem.
Any other questions?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, last chance for Mr. Bones. Has Mr. Bones arrived? There he is.
How are you doing today?
Welcome. Could you introduce yourself, please, and tell us why you'd like to be appointed?
My name's Edwin Bonez. I live at 110 Water Street here in Laconia. I think my interest was getting involved with the community that I now live in and plan to be here for a long time. That was really my interest, getting involved.
Any questions? I mispronounced your name, I'm sorry, Bonez, is that how you pronounce it? Mr. Bonez.
Have you ever served on any boards?
I have not.
In any other place?
No, sir.
What piqued your interest to be on the planning board?
You know, I've got a background in construction and real estate, and I think over the years I've gone to plenty of planning board meetings, and I think what I, what I've noticed, well, I think for me, what I've seen is go to the planning board, it's all in who you know. That's really what it came down to. And I think I'm an outsider. I'm not, I don't know anybody. For me, it's the project, making sure it makes sense. It's gonna, you know, blend into the community, and if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't matter who you are.
And time commitment-wise, you got time?
Yeah, I've got plenty of time.
Okay.
Thanks for coming forward.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, to repeat then, the council will take this matter up at its next meeting on July 27 in terms of electing these positions. It's not necessary for the candidates to be present at that meeting, but you are welcome to do so. Next up is a public hearing. Public hearing tonight has to do with the establishment of a Parks and Recreation Facility revolving fund for community-centered gymnasium floor maintenance. I'll call this public hearing to order at 20 minutes past seven. And note for the record, that notice of this meeting was made in the Wednesday, June 24, 2015, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. Is there anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council on the idea of establishing a Recreation Facility revolving fund for community-centered gymnasium floor maintenance? I know that's why all of you are here tonight. Apparently, no one. So I will close the public hearing at 21 minutes past seven, and the council will take this matter up later in the evening. See, on our agenda next is a presentation on the Master Plan Advisory Team, and from the Master Plan Advisory Team, and as I understand it, Mr. Myers, that is not going to happen tonight?
Correct. There were a number of the Master Plan Advisory Board members who could not make it, and we really, really felt their input, along with the planning director, made sense, so she asked that we pull that until we had a better representation for the council.
Okay, so we'll do that. Mayor's report, one item I have the pleasure of reporting, although it's not, certainly not major news, and that is that we are on schedule for Friday for a closing on the sale of the Colonial Theater properties. And as I understand it from the city manager, the city will be there with a check, literally or figuratively, for $1.4 million to loan to the Belknap Economic Development Council, who will then turn that check over to Mrs. Baldy for outright purchase of the land, and by the end of the day, Friday, that property will be in the hands of the Belknap Economic Development Council. So I see Counselor Bounce smiling over there, and I'm smiling as well, as I think most people are in the city. Certainly, we heard that in spades at our last meeting on June 29, the level of community support for that project. So that is still on, I'm happy to report that is still on schedule, and as I said, the closing will be on Friday. And then the real hard work begins in terms of putting together all the financing package to finance the renovation, which we're expecting, as we've said before several times, to last, to take between 12 and 18 months before all the money will be in hand and renovation can actually begin.
Time and place again?
I'm sorry?
The time, the time and the place?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Do you know?
I have not heard yet. I'm still waiting on the final documents.
Okay, next up is citizens' request to comments on current agenda items. And before I ask for comment, for, open the floor for this, I want to point out that some procedure here again tonight. I know one of the major orders of business tonight is the, the motion that Counselor Bear is going to make that is on the agenda tonight to revisit the issue of the Lakeport Landing property on, or city property leased to Lakeport Landing on Elm Street, and that matter is on our agenda later on this evening. And since that is a procedural matter at this point in time, i.e., there will be a motion to suspend council rules, and if that passes, there will be a motion to reconsider the vote that was taken on this issue on June 8. And because it is a procedural matter, discussion on this matter, when we get to it on the agenda, will be confined to this table only. So now is the appropriate time for anyone here tonight who wishes to address the council on anything having to do with the Lakeport Landing issue or any other issue that is on the agenda tonight. So I would open the floor at this time. Mrs. Kahulik.
How'd you know?
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Judy Kahulik, 76, Lakeside Avenue, Ward One. I wanted to come, I serendipity met Erica Blizzard on Friday. She had called and asked me if I had remembered the discussion at council, when I was a counselor, regarding the lease for her dad, the renewal. He really wanted to buy it. Make a long story short, we were also selling other parts of the city properties. We sold a little tract of land just over the covered bridge in the Weirs to a homeowner. We had looked at the fire station that was in Lakeport. We were gonna put that up for sale. We were also talking about the courthouse. Anyway, this particular matter came up, and we decided not to sell it. We decided to wait down the road, but we gave him first option to buy 10 years from then. That time has come. Unfortunately, our friend Paul Blizzard has passed away. His daughter Erica is now the owner of that business. I think we're getting the, we've got some confusion on that option to buy. As I understand it, the way we did the package is that he would have first option to buy it again. Should he, and he knew he was sick, he could have released it and said, Erica, sell it and move on with the rest of your life. He passed that property to her. She has the next option to buy. You offer it, she was in negotiations. My kind of question was, who called Jack Irwin? They were in negotiations with her. So I'm just going from what I've read. How did he get involved when she's got the option, first right of refusal? From the first right of refusal, she can say, well, this is the price that I'm offering, and you can refuse it. But somewhere in there, if I'm reading this correctly, and I'm sure you'll help me correct that, Jack came in and wanted more money. Well, the city's not in the business to make money. We're a nonprofit entity. So if you're gonna take outside, if I was sitting there, if we're gonna take outside monies, if we're gonna have a bidding war, then put it out to bid to anyone. I think kind of Mr. Wally just kind of spoke to that. There might be other people that are wanting that tract of property. Why just this other person? You haven't finished doing business with Ms. Blizzard yet, because we promised her dad through the paperwork that he would have first option to buy. And if there was a higher price from another offer, not put out to bid to the public, then she should have the right to say, okay, I'll pay that price, and now we're in a bidding war. So I know you have a dilemma, but I wanted to let you know that I do remember the conversation. I do remember that night, and the reason I do is that two reporters came up and stood right there where Counselor Doyle is sitting, and said, are you voting for Paul Blizzard because he was your largest campaign contributor? And then another reporter says, no, 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 you can't ask that. I mean, it was a big fiasco. I had no idea what they were talking about. Didn't bother me, it was just them doing their job. But I do remember that night, and I do remember the conversation, and it all was about the But I do remember that night, and I do remember the conversation, and it all was about the option that where we would be in 10 years. So if Mr. Blizzard was standing here, he'd be fighting you. He'd be yelling. Because he needs to have the option to say, no, I don't want the property. How Mr. Irwin got involved, I don't know. If you're in negotiations with that, if she had turned it down, then you go to next logical. If that's your purpose, to sell it. Any questions? Any corrections?
Any questions for Mrs. Kahulik?
I do.
Yes, sir. Counselor Bowns.
Do you recall, I'm David Bowns from Ward 2.
Yes, sir.
Do you recall whether that discussion occurred at the Buildings and Lands Committee meeting that evening, or whether it occurred during the course of the city council meeting?
It occurred. That's a great question. It was after, it was not, it was during the council meeting. The reason I say that is because the reporters were still here. Very rarely reporters came to the Land and Buildings meeting.
There are no minutes of any kind of a vote with respect to this. Do you recall whether there was a vote?
That's a wonderful, there is, yes, sir, there was, there was a vote. And that's why the reporters came up to me and said, did you vote in favor for this, in favor of Mr. Blizzard, because he was your largest contributor?
And did you believe after that meeting that there was anything else anybody had to do in order to sell the property, or give somebody a right of first refusal?
Well, that again is a very good question. Are you an attorney?
As a matter of fact, I am.
Okay. That's a very, that was out of our job description.
Okay.
Now, as to having a record of it, there's a lot that Mrs. Dearborn did not put down verbatim. Because he already had a lease, it was already in place, and all we did was renew it for 10 more years. It's no big deal. Until 10 years from now, all of a sudden, we've got a little issue, a concern. So I'm not surprised that Mrs. Dearborn did not put it down verbatim, and it wouldn't have been a concern at that time to follow up and say, by the way...
It's not just verbatim. There is no mention of it in the minutes at all. Not, not the mention of the lease, not a mention of anything.
I was there, and those two reporters, one of them being your reporter's the one that asked me that question, and John Coles will shut him down. So I'm sorry that John Coles is not here. Is Michael Kitch here?
Yes.
Right there.
Michael Kitch will remember that question, because John Coles will shut him down, said, you can't ask that question. I had no idea what they were talking about, as in why he couldn't ask me the question. I'd be glad to answer it.
Any other questions?
And I answered it by saying, it's common sense that it goes.
Okay.
But we just didn't want to sell it. That was the whole discussion that night. We did not want to sell it.
That was my understanding from my discussions with Mayor Frazier and with Matt Leahy. Matt Leahy was not on the board, but he was at that meet, the Building and Lands Committee. You were the chair at the time, right?
It was done, I don't know about that. We didn't really have chairs. It was at the council meeting.
It wasn't a committee meeting.
It was?
It wasn't a committee meeting. It was a council.
Right. Might have been a subpar of it. But there should be no question that it happened. I mean, there are other people here tonight that do remember that evening. Mr. Kitch probably can tell you that that question was asked due to that particular vote. So it's not our imagination, it just wasn't, that's why it's important to dot the i's and cross the t's, which sometimes that doesn't always happen, but then there's people that can back it up. Remember, Texaco and Gulf, I think, did a huge suit, and it was just done on a handshake. There was nothing in writing. And I would hate to see the city go through litigation to have this question answered when it's simple common sense. She made you an offer. If you've got someone else, let her have the option of meeting that same price. That's what makes it right.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Former Mayor Frazier.
Hey.
Wow. Welcome.
Nice to see you all. I wish there were so many applicants for the planning board when I was the chairman.
I know.
Me too.
Anyway, Your Honor, members of the council, I've been called by three different people about this issue, and I've given them all my best recollection. It was removed from the council's agenda on the recommendation of the subcommittee because the votes were not there to sell the property. And I would tell you that today, first of all, I have no dog in the fight, so I don't, I'm not here to support either side. I don't, I haven't followed the background, but I, when you get that many calls...
So there was, what started this then was a move to sell the property to Mr. Blizzard?
As I recall, Land and Buildings had a number of properties that they wished to look at, and to see if they decided that they were surplus, and therefore, and the council would vote on each parcel, as I recall, and decide whether they felt them to be surplus, or whether they should retain them. I would tell you, my own personal feeling is, if it was within the village of the city or in the Weers area, and it was owned by the city, they'd never get my vote to sell it. But that's a side issue. As I recall the matter of Mr. Blizzard, and I was in contact with him many times during that process, the result of basically of the committee, and I think probably polling the other counselors individually, the votes were not there to declare it as a surplus property and to therefore sell it. So it was, Land and Buildings reported it out as not to be sold. There was no action ever taken by the council on that parcel of land, other than to renew the lease. And that is what I recall. Any representations that may have been made relative to him having the option, would I believe have been qualified with, assuming the council decides to declare it surplus at some time in the future. Not a guarantee that in 10 years it would be, it would be available to him, but that if they ever changed, I mean, you can't bind a prior council with something like this, in my opinion, anyway. They're the ones that have to first declare it surplus before any action can be taken relative to the sale. So that's about all I can recall, but I do have a vivid memory of the issue, mainly because of my discussions with Mr. Blizzard at the time.
Do you recall if there were any discussions about a right of first refusal?
I don't clearly, David. That probably would have happened in committee if it did happen. I'm not going to say there weren't comments made, but I don't recall them.
Do you recall the issue dragging on at all after that September 26th? There appears to be correspondence in the file between the city manager at the time and the city attorney at the time that lasted for a couple of months.
Relative to the lease?
Regarding the general issue. The implication from my reading it would be that the issue wasn't solved in September one way or the other, that it dragged on, from reading...
And I don't remember when the council voted to renew the lease, but I do know that it was pulled off the council's agenda in September because the council didn't have the will to sell the property. And that is my clear memory of that part of it, that they did not declare that piece to be surplus, and I think that we did some other parcels that year, but that was not one of them.
It's not my issue about whether that it was going to be declared surplus and sold when that lease expired and the renewal came up. My issue is this whole right of first refusal issue and where that comes from, what the history of that is. And I understand that you don't have a real...
I can't stand here tonight and honestly...
You don't have a real clear recollection of that.
I cannot stand here tonight and tell any of you definitively whether that statement was ever made by anyone on the council.
You don't recall a vote, anyway?
Certainly do not recall a vote on the parcel because it wasn't, it was removed from our agenda. And that happened on occasion, I'm sure you've run into it already, when, if not, it comes out of committee that they don't want to do anything. That's it, it's gone. But that representation, David, I...
That's all I want, that's all I'm interested in, Mark. It's okay that you don't remember.
Well, it was only 10 years.
There's a lot of things I don't remember.
Any other questions?
I got a few more gray hairs, but I have a pretty good memory. Anyone else? No? Nice to see you all. You're doing a great job.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kahulik.
Very nice question. It was voted on. Just...
I have no reason to disbelieve you.
I know.
I'm just...
He had to renew his lease. Mr. Blizzard did not want to make any future amendments to that property if he didn't have first option to buy. That was a critical part of it. He didn't want us to throw it into the surplus pile and then sell it to someone else.
Okay.
That's, just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm gonna...
Yes, sir. Counselor Luther. Former Counselor Luther, I should say. It's old home night tonight here.
Yeah. I was gonna say, you know, I'm the only counselor who doesn't have any memory of that meeting at all. And it comes with age, right, Brenda?
Don't forget anything.
Okay. Well, you are different then. Anyways, what I would like to point out is that Michael Kitch, I've known him for 10 years or more, actually, probably, when you think about it. And I've never heard him insert something into a story that he didn't hear. And I've read most of his stories, so I know. And I think that, I think that you ought to reconsider this, and you ought to move to amend, to, not amend the rules, but set the rules aside, and then move on a reconsideration, and perhaps even put it back in committee, if that's what you feel to do. But as far as the magic bullet of what I remember, don't wait on that, because it isn't coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
But if you have any questions that I can't answer, be happy to ask them.
How you doing, Bob?
Pretty good. And I can tell you, quite frankly, when I'm not doing very good and things are really bad, all I have to think is, gee, I could be mayor, and it gets better.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Other former mayor, Matt Leahy.
I'm gonna tell you what I remember. I remember a, the council voting an option to...
And you were in the audience, wasn't you?
Yes. And the reason I was here, and the reason maybe Bob, Brenda, even Henry were here, is it was election time.
Yes.
And we had won the primary since in September. The election is six weeks away, so even though some people may not go to a city council meeting in their life, that short timeframe before the election, they were expected to be here. And I remember it. And I remember Arman, as Leo Frazier used to say, was carrying the water on the issue. He was the advocate for that, for doing something for the Blizzards. I think the best indication of it is when this issue came up currently, and I was talking about it with Michael Kitch, and unsolicited, I said, well, you know, the council gave him an option to purchase that property, you know, way back when. I remembered that. I remember being surprised by it. And I remember Arman. I remember Arman advocating, and as Bob Luther said, there's only one person apparently in this room that wrote a memorandum about what happened, and that's Michael Kitch. He wrote something down. And I think it's highly unlikely that this guy that covers this chamber for years got that wrong. I mean, there were quotes right down to what Eileen said, in quotes. So, but the best indicator to me was when my mind was clear and fresh, and I had the conversation with Mike, what immediately came to me was, well, you know, the council voted that option to purchase them. I remember that, and of course, it's borne out by his story, so.
Any questions for Mr. Leahy? I have one, just quickly. So you took office again in January, not following January.
Yeah.
Do you recall any discussion with the city manager or anyone about this issue once you were back in office?
No.
None at all? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one other point, too.
Sure.
It deals with that issue of Land and Buildings versus the council. I don't think I would have been at the Land and Buildings Committee. I was at the regular meeting of the council. And that's my recollection.
Well, at that time, you were doing the schools, so you might have been at the Land and Buildings.
The schools, the reason I was running for reelection was because the McIntyre issue had gone by, and the school issue was kind of flat. That's what, that was my issue in running. So in September of 2005, I think...
Okay.
The current, that council's consideration of the issue was by the board. I was there as a candidate, you know, for election in November.
Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Mr. Pearson.
I'm actually gonna break the trend. I'm not here to talk about Lakeport Landing. I'm actually here to talk about the budget. My name is Mike Pearson, and I'm here tonight, I'm a resident of Laconia, 43 McGrath Street, and I'm here to express my opposition to the reduction of the city's budget below that allowable under the tax cap. As many of you know, I wear a number of hats in the community. Notably, I serve on the Laconia School Board. I serve as Chair of the United Ways Financial Stability Partnership Poverty Reduction Initiative, and on a number of other local boards. But I'm not here tonight to speak on behalf of any of these organizations. Rather, I'm here to speak as a resident, a business owner, and a taxpayer. Like most people, and like most of you probably, I don't like to pay taxes, and I'm often frustrated by having to pay so much in federal taxes when so little of my money seems to find its way back to benefit my community. I grew up in Massachusetts, and I saw firsthand what happens when government tries to be everything to all people. So I'm usually not one to advocate for higher taxes. However, as a businessman, I do understand the need to project revenues and expenses into the future, to prudently budget and maintain sufficient reserves so that I don't have to slash expenses by laying off staff or sharply curtailing my income when business is slow. And I do this because I know that I can't just generate additional revenue whenever I need it. A city like Laconia, living under a tax cap, is in a very similar situation. Unless the city chooses to override the tax cap, which is undesirable for a number of reasons, the city can't simply generate additional revenues whenever it needs them. Because of this fact, the city also needs to plan carefully and to avoid, to avoid having to drastically curtail spending in future years. As you all know, the tax cap is calculated based upon the current year's expenditures multiplied by the Urban Consumer Price Index plus a growth factor that takes into account building and demolition. Since its inception, the cap has effectively limited the growth of local government, and it has forced us to live within our means, while the growth in the amount of expenditures under the cap has allowed us to maintain the level of services. However, the CPI is a national index. It is not localized, it doesn't account for local inflation, things like pay increases associated with locally negotiated union contracts, health insurance costs that rise differently from state to state, waste disposal costs, or, most importantly, the unique needs of our community. Fortunately, the CPI and the growth factor have kept pace with the rate of inflation of the local budget in the past, and the city's been able to maintain the level of services, and I would add, to prudently build some reserves for future years. However, last year, the city council chose to reduce the amount of expenditures below the tax gap, and this year, the council is proposing even larger cuts below what is allowable under the tax gap. These cuts are unlikely to have catastrophic events, excuse me, catastrophic impacts on city services this year. However, these cuts are going to carry forward to future budgets, and will erode the amount that can be raised by taxes in future years. And in years in which both the CPI and growth factor significantly limit the allowable increase under the cap, this is going to result in this council facing hard choice of eliminating important services or overriding the tax cap. All indications are that next year is likely to be such a year. And with this in mind, it is my opinion that now is not the time to reduce the amount to be raised in taxes. Rather, now is the time for the city to build reserves so that we can effectively weather the fiscal storm that is appearing on the horizon. Laconia's a wonderful place to live and to raise a family, and I have made a substantial investment in property in this city because I think this city's future is bright. However, I also understand the current reality that we face. This council has recognized we have a serious drug problem, and we put resources into the LPD addressing that issue, and groups like Stand Up Laconia and other community members are trying to address that. We have rising poverty, and we, our schools are dealing with that and dealing with kids that have special needs that are, that are having to have additional services. We have a local economy that is starting to rebound, but I think you'll all admit that that's, that's a fragile, a fragile thing, this economic growth. We can't afford drastic reductions in services that will impact how we deal with the issues that we're facing. And we also can't afford the loss in public confidence that's going to ensue if we choose to override the tax cap in a future year. The city needs to continue... The city needs to continue to be future-minded by continuing to address its problems while also living within its means. In closing, I would ask each of you to think about the real impact of the proposed budget reduction. Your reductions will save an owner of an average home in Laconia valued at $146,000, approximately $16. That's about the cost of a burger and a beer at the Holy Grail. Is it worth risking the city's future over a burger and a beer at the Holy Grail? I really don't think that it is. Questions?
Any questions? Comments?
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your coming. Anyone else wish to offer question or opinion to the council tonight on a matter that is on tonight's agenda?
Bruce Wright from Irwin Marine. I just wanted to bring forward or renew a couple of facts that have already been stated as we've gone through this process relative to the Elm Street property. First of all, surprised to hear of something new again this evening, a potential option. This process has been going on for over six months. I would have thought that if anyone thought there was an option, that that would have been the first thing that would have come up in the process, not something after the process has been completed. Furthermore, wanted to make sure that the council was aware that Irwin Marine has expressed continued interest in this property since 1985. I know there is one letter that city manager has on file, and I didn't bring a copy of it, so I can't tell you the year. I think it was from 2005, where we again indicated to the city that we were interested in that property should anything happen to it beyond the existing lease to Lakeport Landing. And then, just as we went through the process, the letter of June 1st, which went out to both parties, Lakeport Landing Marina and Irwin Marine, after the several meetings the city had on it, clearly stated, "The city is looking to maximize value based on the New Hampshire Certified General Appraisal." And that was from the city council notes regarding the matter. And the letter furthermore stated, "The Laconia City Council requests that the highest and best offers be in hand." That completes my comments. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Horn, K-E-R-R-E-N, last name Horn. I live at 36 River Street in Laconia, and I came to the council tonight to address the ordinance that you're gonna be voting on tonight or approving for our temporary traffic ordinance 2015-12, truck and equipment access to River Street attached. I live at 36 River Street, which was between Arch and Jewett. I'm the only white house on River Street. I have a dock that's across the street that's been grandfathered in. About a month ago, I had great concerns about the trucks that are going down River Street, and I had called Public Works to ask them if they know why there are no truck signs posted on both ends of the street. And I also called Mr. Myers here to ask him regarding the right-of-way that they have with it. So I'm here tonight because I have some valid concerns about the alternative to preserving the waterfront property, as well as the environmental erosion and the compromise that these trucks have been causing and will cause in the future on River Street. It's being built... River's Edge is being built by Laconia Community Land and Trust. And before they were approved, and after they were approved, I went in... I was contacted by them, because I'm a homeowner there, and they asked me to come in, and I sat down with them, and they showed me the plans. And at that time, I asked Sal Stephen, "Where are these trucks gonna be put... Coming in and out to build this huge building?" And she reassured me that it would be on Union Ave, that they would... Majority of the trucks would be going out on Union Ave. So I was looking forward to the riverfront, the River's Edge being built, because I think it... I've been there for 12 years, between Arch and Jewett. I raise a family. I have three kids under the age of four. My grandkids live with me. And I've seen the drug issues and the problems and the poverty within that community. I found a bag of heroin this morning in the street. I found heroin needles. When my kids, they go down the banking, they were just right there. I called the police. The guy next door, Mike, has found heroin needles. So I'm hoping that the River's Edge will benefit the neighborhood and bring it up to par a little bit. So I've always been for the River's Edge project, until the trucks came. So when I had spoken to Mr. Monahan from Public Works and from Mr. Myers, he said that he would look into it, investigate it, and call me back within a week, and I never heard anything, and it's been a month. So I called the Laconia Police Department, and they gave me an ordinance, because I'm trying to find out why there's posted... No trucks posted on both sides of my street. There's gotta be a reason for it. Is it because they're protecting the river? Is it because my street is too small to be on? I mean, what... So I'd never heard back from them. I did... Till yesterday, I did hear back from Mr. Monahan from Public Works, called me Sunday afternoon, to tell me that they're gonna go ahead and with the ordinance, and that he didn't find anything in the books regarding the trucks, you know, the signs, and that the meeting's tonight. So I tried to do as much as I can today. So the police department, they had said that it's closed of certain streets and certain vehicles, that that is the ordinance in which if I called the police and said, "There's major trucks on my street, please do something about it," that's what they came up with. But they don't know why the signs were posted. Mr. Monahan from Public Works had said to me that it might have been post... Signs might have been there since 1953, but when he called today, he said he didn't find very much information. So tonight, you have an ordinance that you may pass, a temporary ordinance, giving the trucks access for one full year, until June of 2016. So I'm here to bring to your attention the problems that we're having right now, and I have pictures. This is the truck that's being delivered. These are other trucks that's been back and forth. And if you look at how small that street is, it's 16 feet wide. So it's really a one-way street with these trucks. People that come in have to back out to the stop sign to get in and out. This is some of the erosion that it's causing. There's cracks in the street. The street was only done a few years ago. And what it is... What it's doing, like, this is a good example. This is where they're putting the River's Edge. So the street leans down into the river with guardrails. So the guardrails are pitched towards the river, and it's been like that for some time. I'm not saying that just because trucks have come in the last month that all this damage has occurred, but with future damage, because these trucks are way too heavy to be put on the street. When FW Web was there, I lived there at the time, and their trucks are coming in and out. And I thought, maybe that's why the signs were posted, because even with the FW Web trucks being... It was compromising. The other concern that I have is my banking is compromised. I had a big, like, big boulder roll out of... And roll down. Of course, it could have happened at any time, but it's just coincidental that it happened with these big trucks coming by. And they're coming... They're using River Street several times a day, and your ordinance that you're proposing to approve tonight says that they can come five days a week for 10 hours a day, not the normal eight-hour working day, but you have it from 7:00 to 5:00. That's 10 hours, five days a week, to build this giant building, which also has plumbing, electrical, flooring, roofing. So it's not just these huge trucks with boulders carrying it, compromising the land. The second concern that I have, I can say that when Public Works got there, they had suggested that maybe to tell Laconia Land and Trust, who is ultimately responsible for any and all damage, to maybe resurface the street. I'm not sure if that's a quick fix. I don't know if the council realizes that tonight. The second thing was... The other thing that I was gonna say regarding that is, they water... Because that boulder fell right next to the jog that's governed, that's on our lease. It's like, I know that the shoreline protection... I found this, and this states that the shoreline is protected for my property. So I got ahold of the Department of Environmental Services and asked them, "What's the rights of my property and the shoreline?" And they said that you have to look up to see if there's an exemption. There's shoreline, as you know, and wetland. So the shoreline for the riverfront is exempt, and I do have a map showing here that that property that they're putting on is exempt from the shoreline. But 36 River Street is still... Is not exempt. It's still part of the shoreline. It's protected from the shoreline. So when I looked... When I received this yesterday, Sunday afternoon, from Public Works, he dropped it off at my house, I had looked on here, and I'm a little concerned about what you're proposing tonight for your temporary ordinance. The main concern that you have here is that the project engineer, North Point Engineering, and the Ekman Construction is going to be... Is responsible to notify vendors of the speed and time limit, which is good, of the roadway section, and monitor the conditions of the slope between the roadway and the river, and at least once a month to... At least once a month ascertain that there is no evidence of erosion or any forms of slope failure during the course of the approved term of the order. I don't understand why it would be proposed that a construction company that has the agenda... They're biased. They want to get their work done. I own an electrical company. Why they would be responsible to take care of the city of Laconia's property, being the street, and the environmental services, which is the banking? Ekman Construction is going to monitor by videotaping. So I think it is the responsibility of the city of Laconia and Public Works to monitor and go out there now, look at it, take pictures, measure the slope that you have now before. I think the city should be monitoring damages, and also the environmental services. Because that boulder fell, now I have the right to file a claim, and the environmental services will come out and look at the shoreline and make... And see where it is now, and if there's any more potential damage, because it's not now, it's potential. It's what's gonna happen in the future. So that's why I am here.
Any questions for Mrs. Horn?
No questions at all?
I have one. Did I understand you to say that trucks going in and out of River's Edge are currently using River Street and have been for some time?
Exclusively, except... I might not say that.
I'm sorry?
When I first started complaining one month ago, some of... There's two companies that I could notice with dump trucks that have all the fill that they're pulling out of there. One company would use Arch Street because they honored the signs, and they knew that we were very upset about it. We put cones up in the road...
So they would come down Arch Street and take a hard left?
They would, hard right. Yeah, they would come out of the River's Edge and then take a hard right and go up there. And then there's another company that they use it. So with you tonight, I realize that the ginormous trucks that have... There's only one way into that place, and that is River Street. But I don't think it's at your best interests or mine to be using... To have River Street exclusive to... By passing this ordinance, you're letting every truck, every person, use a 16-foot-wide on a riverfront that's protected by the shoreline to build that huge massive building. And I just wanted you to be aware of it. And when I was in my office this afternoon, it's very quiet in my office, I just have the computers. I have an 1850s house, and I could hear the walls, just a little cracking, just a little... And that's something that's on me. There's nothing I can do about that. That's gonna be the loss that I incur. So the only thing that I can do is protect my banking at this time, and to bring it to your attention to watch the street, and to try to do something about it to protect it.
Councilor Lippman.
So I think I hear two things. One is the remedy that you're looking for is the monitoring and evaluation to be done by someone other than the contractor.
It should be done by the city.
I got that.
And by the environmental, that's correct.
I'm saying, if that piece was addressed, your objection still stands that it shouldn't be passed?
Right. I do.
Okay.
I do. I think that they can use some of those trucks on Arch Street. I don't think our street has to be exclusive. And the 10 hours a day, why can't it be eight, a normal business hour? Seven to four, or seven to three? Why is it seven to five? You know, that's another problem that we have. The monitoring is the main thing.
So you're not looking for an absolute restriction of your street?
That's impossible. They can't get, like, this giant truck...
Just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, it should be built. I have no question about that, and I can't change what's already been done. I just want to try to protect what's going on now and the future of that area. There's nothing I can do about the trucks. And they don't go 10 miles an hour like they say they do. That guy's in third gear by the time he gets to the front of my car. And that was also supposed to be part of the... You know, they were supposed to stay within the 10 mile an hour.
Where are they going from? Are they going up Jewett Street then, or going out to Church Street, or where are they going?
Jewett Street.
Jewett.
Yeah, so they go out in front of the house and go to Jewett.
Just go down one block and take a right.
Right. But the other company did just go right up Arch Street and then out from there.
Go ahead. In your conversations with the land trust, did you get any sense of the number of runs they expected to be on your street?
No, I didn't at all. I didn't... I never knew that they were gonna use my street. My street has no trucks on it. I had no idea. So when I brought it to the attendance of the Land and Trucks, she said, and I have an email, that she would get ahold of the site construction supervisor and speak to him about the trucks.
And have you had any further communication?
No, I have not, because I reached out to you and to the Public Works and to the police.
Thank you. Councilor Hamel.
Yeah, I'm really glad you came tonight.
Oh, thanks. Because, you know, it's...
This is presented to us... We don't write these traffic things.
Yeah.
And I'm very familiar with that street, and the underfootings of that street is not supportive of a 16-wheeler and tractor-trailer trucks and all that. It's gonna be gone.
That's true.
Have they been... Have they been using that street ever since they've started removing debris from that place?
Other than that one company, and that, they only were there a few times exclusively.
Yeah. Because I won't vote for this tonight, because, like she said, that street was just paved a few years ago. That and Arch Street, that's not a street that should be used by 16-wheelers, or 12-wheelers, 10-wheelers, whatever they are. And there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood, on Jewett Street and on Arch Street. As far as I'm concerned, they need to leave their work site, on their work site, and get to Union Avenue, and not use these small side streets, because once they're gone, we're gonna pay for it. Because we've seen this before in the city where contractors... I mean, that's happened up in Armin's neighborhood, when they built the place across the street. The trucks going in and out ruined North Street, and we ended up having to fix some of that. The contractor did pay for some of it, but we ended up repairing a lot of that. So that River Street is not a street for these big vehicles and tractor-trailer trucks to be on.
And the River's Edge, thank you. The River's Edge, if you look at their plans, they do have it going out on Union Ave. They... On their plans, they do have an entrance and an exit for that, once it's built. And she said that they were gonna be using Union Ave and not the street, so... And the signs are... And I'd like to know, and I still don't know, why were the signs there? Why were there no truck signs? Because it's only 16 feet wide and the shoreline is protected? I still don't know the answers to that, so maybe you can find out.
Councilor Bolden.
Yes, I'm glad you came also. I'm the chairman of the Public Works, and I never had any word about this.
Really?
Usually, it comes to our committee, and we look at it and then make a decision after we talk to Public Works and the city. So first, I've heard of it.
Yeah, he actually came out... Yeah, he actually came out when I was taking pictures of the boulder. So, he saw the erosion on that day.
It should have been sent right to our, right to our committee.
Wow.
It wasn't, so.
Well, that's good to know, that, it's good that I'm here. Because you can't fight City Hall, so it was very apprehensive to come.
You can always fight City Hall, wait.
Yeah, okay. It's just important. It's just a really important thing.
Any other questions? Counselor Bowles, did you have a question?
You know, my comment is, thank you for your thorough presentation. I'm concerned that we really don't know that this has been going on, you know? That we haven't been informed about this. I mean, this is all, I think, for each of us, and if I'm speaking for some, if I'm not speaking for all of us, say so. But we weren't, you know, I'm in favor of the River's Edge project. I am, and I want to see it go forward, because I think it's valuable to the city.
It is.
But I don't, I don't want to see it go forward to detriment to you that we can avoid.
Or you. I mean, that street and that banking is not going to support it.
Okay, let's, let's limit it to questions at this point in time, please. We're going to get to this under new business. Any questions for Mrs. Horn? All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, it was an honor. It was fun, thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to comment on an item under tonight's agenda? Mrs. Blizzard?
I hope that you all got a chance to read the package that I sent you. To remind you, I would like to point out that on May 26th, the City Council made it crystal clear that it was authorizing the city manager to start an informal process to try to lay out general conditions for the sale of 21 Elm Street. On June 1st, I received the letter from the city manager. The letter reiterated the city council's authorization to conduct informal conversations with the parties. The Laconia City Council authorized the city manager to conduct informal conversations with the two parties who had submitted written offers to purchase 21 Elm Street in order to lay out general conditions which are of importance to the city. This letter is not intended to be a comprehensive bid document, and the city reserves all rights to request additional items in determining future disposition of the property. The city council announced at the May 26th meeting that the decision was not going to be solely based on the business that was willing to offer the highest dollar amount. Lakeport Landing respectfully listened to the words of the city council and chose to address the proposal, which was not a final bid. The city manager asked for the highest and best offer, not the city council. The two requests and the end result of accepting Irwin's offer over Lakeport Landing's is I just wanted to remind you guys of all of that, and I hope that you do reconsider.
Anyone else before we move on? Okay, we're on to committee reports. I don't believe we have any tonight. Correct me if I'm wrong. Which would move us to liaison reports. Is there any counselor who would like to offer a liaison report tonight? None? Okay, we're on to city manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief tonight, because I know you've got a lot of other pressing items before you. You have two reports that are in your agenda packet for this evening. For the first meeting of the month, we have the financial and operational trends report, and then the monthly economic development report. The financial and operational trends will show new construction value starting since April 1st, which are assessing year at 4.5 million, running slightly ahead of the pace of 3.9 million last year. Turn to the bottom of the back page, or page two. Property tax bills were due on July 1st, so the collection through this is June 30th is running at 78 percent. I expect that number to jump significantly in the report next month, just due to the timing when property tax bills were. Motor vehicle registrations, again, looking to finalize that number, but we did exceed our budgeted revenue amount by about $240-something thousand dollars. So, we had strong vehicle registrations there. We do have a substitute page, so the overtime page that is on your desk this evening is an update. Again, we're tying up the end of the fiscal year. You can just substitute that page for the one that was in your agenda packet, if you would. And then, we also have the update for you on the impact fee revenues and the balance of the various trusts that we have. So, happy to answer any questions on those, if you have any at this point.
Questions?
Moving on to the economic development report, we can look at the unemployment figures for Laconia, Bonnap County, Concord, Manchester, and the state, all trending significantly below where they were in May of 2014. So, again, the economy, while still in a fragile state, as one speaker said tonight, continues to show some mild strengthening. On the backside of the economic development report, we have five months' worth of the CPI U, Consumer Price Index Urban, for the other component in addition to new construction value for our tax cap. It was, came in at zero, was flat for May, so through five months out of the year, we're running at a negative 0.1 percent for that item. Couple of other items that were on your desk this evening, I wanted to, I did provide you a memo that Paul Moynihan, a Public Works Director, brought forward, knowing that the member of the Public Works Committee wanted to speak, wanted to be updated on vehicle purchases. So, knowing that Public Works has not purchased any vehicles with the capital dollars that the fiscal year we just closed out on, we are carrying those forward. But they've identified not only a bucket truck, but a payloader as their two high-priority items. The bucket truck is used extensively, as the memo says, traffic maintenance, city-owned street light repair and maintenance signs, fire alarm cable installation and other specialty projects. This truck is a 2005, I'm sorry, a 2003, with over 11,000 hours on it. It is a truck that we put out there and asking to trade in as well. We've got several bids, including a very competitive bid for an existing, brand-new 2014 that is built and ready to go. Any of the other bids that had come in would require anywhere from 120 days on up to 30 weeks of construction time for the vehicle spec. So, just wanted to provide the council that update, that unless I hear major objections tonight, we are looking to purchase that and trade in the old bucket truck, as well as we are looking at options on potentially leasing or leasing to buy on the loader, but we haven't come to any firm decisions on that. Move along to a recycling update report, which is also on your desk in the colored Excel spreadsheet. We just completed the full calendar year, which, not a calendar year, fiscal year, July 1st to June 30th period, and we've got comparisons from that period of 2013 to 14, and then 2014 to 15. We track two things. We track the amount of tonnage every two-week cycle, because we do the recycling one week, and we do curbside trash pickup every other week. Really, the numbers are statistically insignificant when you look at the difference between them. So, and the difference of tons between one year over the next was a 58-ton increase on a volume of over 3,700 tons. So, again, less than a 2 percent difference, and that equates into a dollar difference of year over year of, it was $8,800 more over this prior fiscal year than the fiscal year before that. So, we are continuing to recycle at a curbside rate about in the area of 23% to 24%. Again, with the remote locations, it's always a challenge to determine how much is being diverted to those remote locations which are accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, off of the curbside. So, we are at a steady figure, and again, the year-over-year impact was really insignificant. So, I wanted to provide you with that update as well. And the finance director, we're not taking action on it tonight, but has provided a list of the carryovers, sorry, carryforwards that we are recommending of, most typically items that were not fully expended in fiscal year 15, most of them going either towards long-range projects or capital items. And those items are listed there. I know you just got that this evening. Happy to follow up on any items with you over the next two weeks. But that'll be an item that'll be on your agenda for July 27th, to approve those carryforwards, so we can keep items like the drainage improvement studies, street sidewalks, some of the milfoil treatments, some of the other capital items that are in there.
A total of what? 1.7 million, something like that? Is that where I read that, right?
Yes, about 300,000 in the operating budget in line items, a little over a million, or just short of a million-one in capital in the general fund, and then we have another 300,000 or so in the sanitary sewer fund, and then a little bit into the internal service fund, basically for those public works vehicles that I just spoke of. We do have preliminary, so any of the numbers we've put out tonight on some of these, again, we are in the midst of closing the fiscal year books, so they're subject to some maybe slight revisions. We do have general numbers on the motorcycle week, and again, not broken down completely, because there are a few items that are pending still, both on the expense side and the revenue side. But a ballpark number is, we're probably looking to have revenue on the city side exceed expenditures in the area of about $25,000 to $30,000 as a ballpark range right now. And in two weeks, we will have the full breakout for you, the detail by various departments or components of that, but that's a thumbnail for you tonight. A lot going on in the finance department this time of year with fiscal year changing over, and a lot in payroll with the new, the year kicking in for the collective bargaining agreements, closing out the fiscal year 15 books and all of that stuff. So, happy to answer any questions on any of those items for you this evening.
Any questions for the manager? Counselor Hamel?
So, on the Public Works, so then you're looking to purchase the bucket truck at this time?
Unless there are any objections, we feel really good about that bid. It's an existing one. I don't know if it was built for spec or built for another community that backed out, but you can see it's significantly lower than the other bids, and they're actually offering the highest value for the trade-in. So, it would be a shame to not move on, especially with the lead time as well.
Okay. But you're not doing anything with the loader right now?
We're looking at options right now on lease, so no firm recommendation. It's just the other, other major purchase that we're, that we're working toward right now, and we'll bring you updates as we have.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to new business. First order of new business tonight is restoring lots 63 and 65 Belvedere Street to their pre-merger status. I think this was on a previous agenda and was postponed because the homeowners were unavailable.
Correct.
Do you want to give us a briefing on that, Mr. Myers?
Yes, and I'm not sure if the, are the Drakes in the audience, but I have reviewed their requests.
They are.
I've reviewed their requests. Staff and I have no issues with the restoration. Again, the lot line, these were involuntarily merged. There's been no improvement by them taking advantage, advantage is the right word, utilizing the combined lots as a joint lot to the benefit of being able to construct something without the setback requirement. So, there's been no concern or issue there. So, from my perspective and staff perspective, we have no objection to these being restored to their initial.
So, there's, there's one residential building on this lot, is that correct?
65. 63 is vacant.
I saw 63 on the, on the house. What is that? Is it duplex or?
Yeah.
One building, two addresses?
Correct.
And the lot, what we're identifying here is Lot 63, there's no building on? Any questions? Okay. A motion would be in order to move to restore lots 63 and 65 Belvedere Street to their pre-merger status as requested.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Boldak, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion of this request to merge lots 63 and 65 as requested?
Do we have to identify the tax map?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to identify the tax map?
That is not in the, in the document that was provided me for this meeting, no.
It's in the background, but it's understood, and with the attachment and everything, I think you're, you're fine. You can certainly reference it in the, it's listed right there.
I just don't want to do something, not completely.
I think the common name is then the 63 and 65.
63 and 65 Belvedere Street. Okay. Okay, any discussion? All is in favor of approving the restoring of these two lots to one? Please raise a hand.
Right.
Vote is six to nothing, and that request is approved. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next up is a request from the Guilford Women's Baseball Team to hold a fundraising event for the New Hampshire Food Bank at Opechey Park on August 9th, 2015, from noon to 3:00 p.m. I understand there's going to be a representative here tonight from the baseball team? Hi.
It's basketball, I apologize.
There's been some confusion over this, so.
Okay, I'd be happy to help you out with any of that. It's basketball, by the way, I apologize for that.
It isn't baseball.
No say.
I wondered about that.
My name is Kylie Sandville, and I actually founded the Guilford Women's Basketball League, and I currently operate it. We are down currently for the summer due to the busy schedules of the women that we do have that partake in, in the basketball league, but we will be up and running again in the fall. Part of what we do in our basketball league, we do have several single mothers, people who are out there in the community who have received help in the past, understand some of the different variances of what the status is, if you will, within the community. And we decided that we would like to give back quarterly to the communities. So, what we are doing on August 9th is actually looking to host a family fun day, which is solely fundraising for the New Hampshire Food Bank. We have had some donations. We have some games to set up. We've had donations, we'll have a raffle table. Essentially, what it is, is we ask any participant who would like to come and enjoy all the free festivities that we're offering, which I can go through with you as well, to donate a non-perishable food item to the New Hampshire Food Bank, which is what we're working for this time. Doing that gets you in to enjoy any of the free events that we are offering. We also do have, like I said, a raffle table. Some vendors, they aren't selling anything, just kind of promoting catalogs, maybe samples their products, so forth.
And this is going to be at Smith Track? Is that my understanding now?
We, they never, when we talked to Parks and Rec, they never specified an area in which we would have to use. They specified Opechey Park. Our assumption was the first field on, off of North Main Street there, the first field there would be where the majority of our operations would be.
Next to Smith.
Most acceptable to the different natures of the people and the families with strollers that would be coming.
Now.
Counselor Hamel?
Is this basketball or softball?
I run a basketball league, sir. Yes.
They're not playing either?
We're not playing.
Okay.
We're simply, we're simply fundraising for, we do it quarterly, a different fundraising opportunity, and we're working with the New Hampshire Food Bank.
There was more than a little confusion over this one.
I can understand. I can understand.
Stop saying there's no basketball.
So, it's the group of basketball women that are looking to do a community event in fundraising for New Hampshire Food Bank.
Any questions? Okay, a move, a motion would be in order then to approve the request from the Guilford Women's Basketball Team, or is it league or team?
League.
League.
Yes, sir.
Women's Basketball League to hold a fundraiser for the New Hampshire Food Bank at Opechey Park on August 9th, 2015, from noon to 3:00 p.m. as requested. Moved by Counselor Boldak, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion of this request? All is in favor of approving it? Please raise a hand.
Right.
Thank you. The vote is six to nothing, and that is approved.
Thank you for your time.
I might add parenthetically here that this has nothing to do with you. We've got another issue here. We've talked about this several times, about the requests that are coming from the Parks and Rec Department or from the board, I don't know which these are coming from, are ambiguous at best, inaccurate at least. And it just seems to me that we need more information on what these things are all about. Okay, next up is the aforementioned temporary traffic order for, to allow truck and equipment access to River Street, having to do with the River's Edge apartment construction project right across the river here from City Hall. Counselor, I'm sorry, Mr. Myers, I'm going to recognize you for a briefing on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you heard from Ms. Horn. I do appreciate her thoroughness in the presentation. Just to be, I think, completely balanced here, I know Luke Powell and Paul Moynihan have been out there combined a minimum of two times, and I think it's more than that. I know I've spoken to Ms. Horn on the phone once, and I believe Nancy in my office has spoken to her on twice. So, I believe the city has been responsive, including Paul stopping there yesterday because he left several phone calls to let Ms. Horn know that this was on the agenda for tonight, and left it in her door with his business card on a Sunday afternoon. So, I just want you to know that the staff across the board has been taking this seriously. So, the issue is the construction project at River's Edge. So the issue is the construction project at Rivers Edge. A number of things go into this, so Ms. Horn's correct, the signs were up for no truck traffic on River Street, which would mean that coming down Jewett Street or coming in off of Church Street, you would not be able to make that run into it. So the trucks would have to come down Art Street and make that tight turn into the site. And there was additional concern about sight lines up on Union Ave, and that if you know where the hill crests by Art Street, as large trucks slowing down to make, to navigate that turn, there was concern over vehicles coming over the hill with a large truck, and it seemed that from a sight distance, Jewett Street was a better approach to come in from both directions. Paul Moynihan did try and research best he could to see why the no-truck signs were up there in the first place, and again, no one even knows when they went up, so we don't know definitively the reason for that. We did try to take into consideration, you know, impacted neighbors and limit the hours, not on the weekends, you know, whether the hours are seven to three or seven to five, I have to believe the number of trucks that are going to be required to be on the site isn't going to change just because the hours might be longer or shorter, but we can certainly look to that. We will actively have the site manager be responsible for a ten-mile-an-hour speed limit there, we've already spoken to them. The reason we were having the engineer or the contractor do the videotaping is to put the onus on them for staff and equipment to go out there, and as a condition of this traffic order, to provide the documentation for the city, as opposed to always having to have a city staff person go out there. It's really no different than a utility who might be out in a neighborhood doing work or blasting, and a lot of times they might go videotape foundations for existing conditions, and then, you know, postconditions after construction's done. But that was basically to put the requirement and the expense, if you will, on someone else for staff and equipment to videotape it and turn it over to the city. We did go out when we had the call about the boulder, it was, we were unable to determine whether it was caused by a truck traffic, or whether it was caused just by a natural rain event type of stuff, but in addition to that, we will be videotaping, you know, the shoulder bank there. And then also the roadway section, you know, is there, so we cannot limit trucks from coming down on Art Street. So if the request is, and I can't speak to what the land trust may have said during a meeting about where it was, but Art Street, you know, is a, is a public street, and trucks of that size are allowed on Art Street, so I don't believe it's, and again, thinking of the slope coming off that site, it would be significant challenges for large sixteen-wheelers loaded to be, to be doing that. So I think that presents fairly, I certainly respect the concerns that Ms. Horn has. We've tried to lay out everything we felt was very reasonable in this approach in order to take the neighbor's concern into it. If there's something we can do further with her foundation, and this is the first I'm hearing about little maybe cracking a wall, we can certainly add that as a stipulation that we go and specifically do the videoing of that as well for future protection, but I think we've tried to be responsive, and I'm happy to take any input the council may have.
Any questions of the manager before we, Counselor Lehm, Counselor Bear, go first?
Oh, okay. Anything from the construction or the contractors setting aside a bond or monies to cover repaving the road or restoring the road, or maybe the impact fee? Is there anything in the impact fees so that the city isn't going to be responsible?
We could certainly look to add something about the damage, and that was the whole intent of having that documented now as the project's in its early stages, so that we can show where it stands today and where it might be, and if, again, it's not a heavily traveled road, so if there is damage, it certainly, it would be our ability to go back after the contractor who was involved with that.
Go ahead, Counselor Lehm.
So do I take it that you think it would be worthwhile for you to go back and have a meeting with parties to be here, and, based on what Ms. Horn had to say tonight, and to refine this a little bit more before we pass it?
I probably would prefer if you were okay with this and wanted to add some additional items of the videotaping and of a, some sort of a performance bond on the condition, to make that, that this is what the council approved, otherwise we're waiting, you know, a couple more weeks before we've got that done and back to you. So if this at a minimum, plus some additional identified steps, I think that would be the preferable route to keep this going.
Go ahead.
I understand your concern about Art Street, but if Art Street is an acceptable, and they had flagmen or something available to make sure that that line of sight issue wasn't, I mean, I think, I might like to, I think we might get something more out of it if we could work something for a couple more weeks temporarily to get the parties together on this. I mean, I think it's not often someone comes in strongly objecting, but understanding that the project's needed, and I think the concern about that particular roadway and the shorefront there, that, you know, I have some, I have some concerns about it as well in terms of what, because if there is a problem, it may be, you know, we've experienced on the city side of the river, some collapse of embankments, and I just, on the side of caution, I'd rather see us take another couple weeks to refine this and work out something temporarily to deal with the safety concerns that you've identified about using Art Street.
Counselor Bolduc.
Yeah, I just wish that when something like this happens at the committee that it's under should be notified, so we could be out there looking at it at the same time, rather than to just get it and unpack it and don't know anything about it.
And I hear you on that, it, I guess from my perspective and Paul's perspective, we thought this was more administrative than a real issue that needed a lot of input and a special meeting to do, but point taken.
Counselor Hamel.
There's probably a good reason at some point that those signs were put there, and it's probably because, like I said, the material under that road is probably not a good base for big trucks to be on it, and that is a wide road, so we probably could have erosion of that banking. I mean, if they're going to be going through there twenty, thirty times a day or more, who knows? I don't think River Street is a good place to put that kind of equipment on it. I'm not thrilled even with Art Street, but I'd rather see it go down Art Street than this, and like Henry said, they can hire a flag person to go out and monitor the traffic and slow it down when these trucks come to the end, to pull out, they do it all the time. So I won't vote for this if River Street is left on there.
My recommendation would be just to kill this tonight, because if the concern is about the quality of the construction of River Street, that's not going to change whether we videotape it or not.
Correct.
So if the concern is that that's something we're not going to fix, then I would ask that you kill this tonight, and we will let the contractor know that that's not a acceptable access point to the project, and I will make that contact tomorrow morning, so I can't say what may happen tomorrow morning before communication is had, but will certainly be passed along in a timely manner tomorrow if you decide to shoot this down tonight.
Counselor Bowden.
I'm not sure that River Street is or is not suitable to this kind of traffic. I'm not sure pursuant to what Henry said, the counselor from Ward Three, that we can't adequately address any of these concerns in a short timeframe. So I'd rather not see it killed, I'd just like to see it tabled till we answer some of these questions, because this is an important project, I think we all know that. That kind of access could make a real difference in terms of how we go about the completion of it, and I think that the issues that are raised can be addressed in a very short timeframe with a little effort. So I don't want to kill it.
What?
I want to table it, so I move to table it.
Second. We have a motion to table, to time certain, sir. Counselor.
Next meeting.
I'm not going to be here.
What, can I ask?
A second, let me finish the conversation, do you want to?
But I don't have to be there for that, I'm not the technical guy.
The motion by Counselor Bowden is to table this issue until our next meeting on July twenty-seventh, and that motion was seconded by Counselor Lehm.
I just, I would like to know when this is going to take place, so that the committee could be there to look at this at the same time.
Motion to table is not debatable, so we have a motion on the floor to table this matter to the meeting of July twenty-seventh. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Opposed? Vote is six, five to one, I'm sorry, in favor of tabling, and the measure has been tabled to our next meeting.
May I ask a question now?
Yes, go ahead.
If this is tabled, are we going to allow the trucks to proceed?
No.
Okay.
So the, so if there is an issue now, the police would be asked to monitor the situation?
After a reasonable time tomorrow, we will put them on notice and give them an opportunity to let all the subs working on the project be aware of that, and then there should be no truck, truck traffic, otherwise it will be enforceable action.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, we're on to unfinished business. First item under unfinished business is second reading of resolution relative to establishing a Parks and Recreation revolving, revolving fund for community center gymnasium floor maintenance. A motion would be in order to move a second reading of a resolution relative to establishing a Parks and Recreation revolving fund for the community center gymnasium floor maintenance. Moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion of adopting that resolution? All in favor, please raise a hand.
Right.
Vote is six to nothing, and that resolution is adopted, thank you. Second item under new business, or I'm sorry, under old business, is Counselor Bear's request for a suspension of the rules. Before I recognize Counselor Bear to make that motion, which we're anticipating, I'd like to brief the council generally as, on procedure here, so that we all know how we're going to approach this before we start this conversation. As I said, at this point in time, this conversation will be limited to those of us at the table. Presumably here, and a second Counselor Bear is going to make a motion to suspend the council rules to allow us to reconsider that vote taken on June eighth, which has passed the time for a normal reconsideration motion. That motion will take a positive vote of four counselors to approve. If it does not gain, when we get to that point, four votes, the issue is dead and we'll move on to other business. Assuming that Counselor Bear's motion does get a minimum of four votes from the six counselors, a motion would then be in order, as the next order of business, to reconsider the vote that was taken on June eighth. And that motion will have to be made by one of the four counselors who approved the vote, voted in the affirmative on that motion on June eighth. The second to that motion can be made by any of you, okay? So once that motion is made and seconded, presumably we get that far, then the motion on the floor will be to reconsider the vote taken on June eighth to sell the property to Irwin Marine. And at that point in time, it would be, it will be germane to have a general conversation about this entire issue and all sub-issues regarding this issue. So everything will be on the table here amongst us at that point in time on that reconsideration vote. You can bring up any issue you want regarding this general issue in mind, okay? So at the end of that general discussion then, we will have a vote to reconsider, and that vote will take a four-three majority at a minimum to approve. If it does not receive the four votes necessary for passage, then the issue will be dead at that point in time, and we'll move on. If it does receive the necessary votes, then we have in effect reconsidered that motion, but that doesn't end things. Then the next motion on the floor that would be germane, since we're reconsidering it with the, with the, with the assumption that a mistake was made on June eighth, in Counselor Bear's opinion, then the next germane motion would be to rescind the vote that was taken on June eighth, okay? And that motion could be made by any of you, and seconded by any of you at that point in time. So the reconsideration vote can only be made by those of you who voted in the affirmative, but the motion to rescind, which would be the third motion down the trail, could be made by any of you. And if that motion is seconded and approved after discussion, then in effect, we're back to square one.
Point of order.
Okay. Any questions on procedure?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. If, assume we get past it, so we get to a consideration of a vote for reconsideration, that would be the time for us to engage in exchange of thoughts and ideas about the viability of that request.
Yes, everything would be on the table in terms of the discussion of the issue when we get to the vote, if we get that far, to the vote to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, Counselor Bear, do you wish to make a motion?
Yes. In view of confusion and some procedural problems, I request that we suspend Rule Twenty of Procedures for the purpose of asking a counselor on the prevailing side of the Twenty-One Elm Street vote on June eighth to make a motion to reconsider.
Is there a second to that motion? Second, Counselor Bowden, second's the motion. So we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules for the purpose of us allowing a motion to be made to reconsider the June eighth vote with regard to the sale of Twenty-One Elm Street. Any discussion of the motion to suspend the rules? All is in favor, please raise a hand. I'm sorry, discussion?
I think we should advance it so that we can have a conversation, so I'm going to vote in favor of Counselor Bear's motion.
Any other discussion?
You don't.
Strictly on the motion to suspend the rules at this point. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, rules have been suspended, and so the next order of business would be for one of the four counselors who voted in the affirmative, if they wish at this point in time to reconsider that vote on June eighth.
I move for the reconsideration of the council vote to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase-sales agreement with Irwin Marine for surplus property located at Twenty-One Elm Street.
Motion has been made by Counselor Bowden, and seconded by Counselor Bear. So we now have the floor open to any and all debate on the motion to reconsider.
Let's take a vote first.
Not everybody at once.
No. The motion's on the floor, now we can have a conversation.
Who wants to go first?
I might as well.
Counselor Bear.
I think we all received packets from Erica Blizzard, owner of Lakeport Landing, and I think her timeline was excellent, and I hope that you all appreciate the fact of all the work that she's done in trying to save her business. I have a similar timeline in that I believe, I lost my timeline, on May twenty, May twenty-sixth, we authorized the city manager to negotiate informally with the two parties, and then to get back to the city council. It was unanimous vote, six to, six to nothing. I believe it was our intention for the city manager to discuss with the two parties all of the, all of, everything that was involved, price, what some of the city requirements were, et cetera, and then to come back to us with the information. However, in his letter, while he, which, by the way, nobody on the council got a copy of that letter. I asked for it after our, after we had voted to sell the property to the Irwins, but if you read the letter, the letter wrote that this was a follow-up to action taken by the council on May twenty-sixth, and it was to be an informal conversation with the two parties, laying out the general conditions. The letter is not intended to be a comprehensive bid document, and the city reserves all rights to request additional items in determining future disposition of the property. Yet at the end of the letter, he specifically asks for their, the best offer and to be made in a sealed envelope, which to me is kind of contradictory, and I thought was procedurally incorrect for us. At that meeting on June eighth, Attorney Dyer stood up and asked us not to take an action that night, but to give them an additional two weeks in which they could go out and get a reappraisal, and then make an additional offer. get a reappraisal, and then make an additional offer at that time. It was never addressed. We didn't answer Attorney Dyer's request. We went into non-pub session for 50 minutes. And during that non-pub meeting, we took a vote to give the property to Irwin Marine. So, there was no chance for further discussion by the Lakeport Landing. I just think, to be fair, and in the meantime, the situation about the option, we all received a copy from the Daily Sun, in which it does say that the planning, the land and building committee did approve it, and then it went to the city council, and they ultimately agreed to give first option to the Blizzards. And other than that, I mean, there's volumes of stuff here, and we've all heard it. I just would like us to be fair and give consideration to Lakeport Landing, whether it comes out yes or no. At least to reconsider it gives us an opportunity to give them every chance there is.
Who's up next? Counselor Bolduc.
Yeah, after we had that meeting, I was in shock. I got back to this table, and I couldn't believe what happened in the other room. Because I was at that 2005 meeting, and I voted that night that it would be offered to the Blizzards at the end of this year to give us a proposal to purchase that property. And why this council just ignored that, I just cannot understand, and I'm still in disbelief. I think that they should be given that. The way that reads is that we have until the end of October before we make a decision to sell it. And I don't know why that can't happen. It just was not done in the right way.
Before we continue here, we've again had reference, our first two speakers, to what happened in 2005, as we had a number of questions about that raised earlier during the public comment portion of our meeting. I would like to ask, at this point, the city manager, who's done some research, his office has done some research on what the paper trail is from 2005, if you could brief the council on that, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. There was a land and buildings committee on the night of September 26th, 2005. I believe it started at 6:30. At the time, I believe council meeting started at 7:30. There are no minutes anywhere of the land and buildings committee, but that would have been a committee reporting out to the council for the 7:30 meeting. I know Ms. Blizzard provided copies of the city council minutes for the September 26th meeting. There is no mention anywhere in there about that item whatsoever, except that it was removed from the agenda, and I forget which speaker said it, probably because the recommendation from the land and buildings committee wasn't.
From the agenda of the land and buildings committee.
Yeah, wasn't to sell it, so therefore it wasn't going to be considered as surplus. Beyond there, we've searched everything on both ends of that date. There were no resolutions to provide a right of first refusal, to do any kind of an addendum to the existing lease agreement to do that. I have checked with our city's legal counsel, who was legal counsel at the time. There's nothing in their records of being requested to draft any type of a first refusal agreement based upon a city vote. So, and Mr. Wright was at the podium, and he is correct that he did send a letter in November of 2005, and I can certainly get it downstairs, but I think I can paraphrase pretty accurately, something along the lines of, "We understand the city council is having discussions about the Lakeport Landing parcel. We want to reiterate our interest, as we did in 2002." And that was as late as November, and the language certainly was not any stronger than that. It was, "We want to just go on record. We understand you're having discussions. We still have an interest." And we've checked many months beyond the date, and I think you've heard former Mayor Leahy say, when he took office in '06, he does not recall this item coming up. So, from the city's perspective, there is no vote in the minutes, there was no request to draft the document, there was no executed document. And even when I met with Mr. Blizzard and Ms. Blizzard, and I forget the exact date, but they had requested a meeting, knowing that the lease was coming up at a period in the future. I do not recall at that first meeting, the conversation being about, "We were granted a right of first refusal," because then, I think, the discussions would have taken certainly a different step, if that's how they approached it, and we would have looked for an executed document that granted that right, or a council vote that did it, because certainly, you know, if the council had taken a formal vote, and nothing has changed since then, and a document was executed, or even if a document wasn't executed, if nothing has changed since then, that vote would, in my opinion, would still be a valid vote at this point, and a document could have been executed. But we have no record of any of that in-house minutes with our legal counsel, and nothing that the Blizzards have brought forward to say. Here's a legal document that offers that for us.
My understanding is that there is correspondence in the file back between the city manager at the time, Eileen Cabanel, and the city attorney at that point in time, in the timeframe after September 26th.
There is. There was some correspondence in November and in December that tied into the question of, "Does the council have to go out to competitive bid on this?" And I think it ties back to our purchasing ordinance, which we've discussed separately, that talks about an unsolicited offer. If it's received, the next step could be, the council could schedule the public hearing for the purpose of getting public input and potentially declaring the property surplus and going that route, and it dealt with issues of whether or not the city was required to go out to a competitive bid process on this, or could they entertain another means of disposal, either in a right of first refusal, or extending a lease, or along those lines to it. So, and that correspondence between legal and the city manager's office did occur into November and December, well after the September 26th.
And nothing passed then? Nothing passed December of 2015?
2005.
'05, I mean, sorry.
Correct. There was nothing beyond that, until more recent history.
Trail ends at that point.
Yes.
What was the legal response to the method of bid?
It was pretty similar to what's provided the council here, that if only one offer came in on a property that the city had not declared surplus, you needed to follow Chapter, I believe it was 183, off the top of my head, that identifies how the city may dispose of surplus property. Neither the city could declare it surplus, in which case it would go out to bid, or if unsolicited offer came in, the public hearing process, and then it could have been done, but there was no action taken by the council back then. And then actually, I think, you know, Mayor Leahy tied in, the council, I think, changed significantly between that time and the fall of 2005.
We all came on.
Until January of 2006. So, I can't tell you, I wasn't here at the time. I cannot tell you what may or may not have happened. It'll just be conjecture on my part, but what we looked for, what we've asked for, there is no record of the things that I've mentioned.
But if you had an unsolicited bid from Lakeport Landing, you're dealing with them. Irwin Marine steps up, you say another unsolicited, but once you have a bid and somebody else comes in, it's, that second bid isn't unsolicited.
It's unsolicited in the fact that the city has not advertised that they are actively selling it, so really no difference than the.
But it did show that more than one person was interested in the property.
Absolutely, and I think that changed the dynamics a little bit, where the talk about dealing exclusively with the one party, in our role as elected officials and appointed officials in trying to be open with the process and treating, you know, all taxpayers, property owners fairly. I think when a second offer, whether you've advertised in a bid package or bid document or not, now you've known that two have specifically put in writing their intent. I think that changes the dynamics of just being able to deal with one.
It's why the whole thing got kind of cloudy, because now, like Mr. Holy, who was here earlier, he probably would have made a bid also if it had been made public. I mean, it just sort of made everything just that much more gray.
And I certainly understand that, and don't necessarily disagree. I think there was plenty of discussion here during public meetings, and they are broadcast in the minutes and the newspaper coverage, that, you know, at one point, we had one offer, and then at an additional point, we had a second offer. So, I think that was fairly well presented out there, and others certainly could have submitted as well.
Counselor Lippman.
So, this council was dealt the hand, actually, that this particular property transaction dates back to a Supreme Court decision case, where the city did sell the land to the Blizzards for, I think, some, if I understand, somewhere around $25,000 originally.
Yeah.
The Supreme Court required the city to unwind that transaction based on procedural matters, and that's how the lease came to be. So, you know, going back to its origins, there were some imperfections, and the Supreme Court, I think, required the city to pay the legal fees of both parties in that settlement. We were approached, as Counselor Baer talked about, and we did make actions on, under Chapter 138 for unsolicited, the council, and then sought legal counsel with respect to this, and were advised that, in the best interest of the city, to exclusively negotiate, given the fact that we had another proposal on the table, was not in the best interest or the wisest move for us. And so, then, we asked the manager to try to help advance this, because I think there were a number of counselors on, that wanted this to move along, that I think there were a number of councils, including myself, that would like to have seen this play out, that the Blizzards continued to be there. And I think the interest in just a safety net, that that potentially had a potential not to happen, came into one of the conditions that we asked the manager to talk to the parties about, which was to at least provide for, over a two-year period for transition, should it not work out. Then, you know, we, again, having to balance this thing that we're not purely a business, but we're also got to make sure that we're acting in the best interest of the citizens and the taxpayers of the community, and we got an appraisal. And that appraisal showed that it was significantly above what the offer of either the Blizzards or Irwin Marine put in front of us. You know, I think in terms of the informality of trying to bring back a proposal, given that there was an appraisal that was out in the open for both parties to consider, and trying to bring something back, I look at informal as being not as restrictive as Counselor Baer saw it, but that in bringing the, something forward credibly for us, we needed some sort of reaction to it. And basically, you know, what, we were just so far apart with respect to where the Blizzards came in on. Basically, they came back with a bid that was at a level that was rejected to begin with. And I think their way of looking at it is that they should, we should take into account the investment that they made of approximately $200,000 to build the building, or somewhere in that neighborhood, and that their bid approximates what the Irwin Marine, or maybe even greater, when you take the original investment that they made, plus the additional money that they were offering. Unfortunately, I think that, in my mind, we're so far apart that, you know, I was at the position coming into this, that if it was close, I would like to see the current business maintain its situation and not be disrupted. But we're just very far apart. I think the position that the Blizzards still take is to, that we have to accept an appraisal done by someone that they hire, and that we have to take below market value for it. And I think here, again, it doesn't have to be, in my mind, it didn't have to be exact, but it had to be close, and it's not close. And I think it was helpful tonight to hear the different perspectives, and I wanted there to be, this to have full light of day, because, you know, understandably, frustrations over how this came with, but I think this council was dealt a hand that it didn't begin with, and we had to play it from where it was. And the fact is, there was a Supreme Court case that went against the city on this. The fact is, is that if we were going to sell it, just, if no one ever came forward, we were in a position where we did an appraisal on the property, and we needed to get somewhere reasonably in and around that. So, I think that was helpful to get all this all on the table, because it's going to be a decision that leaves one party aggrieved, and, you know, at least to be able to get your thoughts and your opinions, and the people who back you to be able to have their say, that's minimally, you know, what government should do. But, you know, just where I'm at, looking at the whole picture, is that we're not, we're not close, and that, you know, that the previous Supreme Court decisions suggested that we weren't in a position to just exclusively ignore when Irwin came forward. That's my take on it. I'm interested to hear what my fellow counselors have to say.
Counselor Hamel hasn't spoken yet.
You know, respectfully to the parties involved, you know, and what Henry just said, he outlined it pretty good. I was on the council at that time, probably for a few months, because I replaced Rick Judkins. And I do remember us going over surplus properties, what we wanted to get rid of, and I had a section on the south end, and that was my packet, and other counselors had different packets around town to investigate the properties. I wish I could say I remembered the vote on the Blizzard property, but I don't. I'm not saying it wasn't taken, but I don't specifically remember the vote about offering them first refusal on the property. Being said, if that vote was taken, and it was an actual motion and a second and a vote, and not just a council's opinion or suggestion, like we give the manager at times, you know, "How does the council feel about a certain thing?" So, I don't know which way that might have been. But if it was a legitimate vote, motion and second and voted, and it got approved, then at that point, to me, it would be up to the city manager to redo the lease. And to me also, respectively, that the Blizzards would be in here the next day and say, "I want the lease redone. The council voted on it, and let's redo it." Evidently, that was never done, because the lease still states, at the end of the 30 years, they walk away from the property and becomes property of City of Laconia. So, you know, to me, it should have been done right away by them. We've also been, we've been talking about this for well over a year. This goes back to last summer, and maybe even less, spring. We've been discussing this. So, within the last couple of days, this came up, that we made a vote. So, we didn't know of this at any time before. So, you know, it should have been taken care of back then, when that vote was taken, and it wasn't. So, that's what I have to say right now about it. So that's what I have to say right now about it.
Counsel Bolden.
I can't say that it wasn't. I can remember voting for it. And I know you were new on the council at the time, and probably didn't know how everything went, but when we got that appraisal from this other company, I said to myself, you've got to be kidding me. Are we that far off in the assessments of the City of Laconia? If we are, we got a problem, more than this. And...
Wait a minute.
And I just cannot understand why we didn't take their offer to have somebody else come in here and take another look at this assessment. Why didn't we do that? They offered to pay for it. You know, I just, it just doesn't make any sense. But that vote was taken that night, I can remember it. Judy Koholik was here tonight and said she could remember it. I mean, you know, we're not just making things up. We were there.
I'm going to go to people who haven't spoken yet first.
Just one, I'm sorry. Just on a technical point, the appraisal for coming up with property taxes and the appraisal that was done for purposes of value in the property, they're not identical aspects.
Right.
And I just think important for the record and the community, as they're considering what they're hearing on that matter, is that there are two different, there are multiple approaches to valuation, and the one that appraised the land was not the same type of appraisal you use for putting together the property taxes.
Counsel Doyle.
I'm feeling like Counsel Lippman, and that I would have loved to have said, fine, this needs to stay with the Blizzard family. But like he said, also, the discrepancy in the offers were just too huge to ignore. And I think also the fact that, one thing that did bother me, that did concern me, is that we had, we rejected a dollar amount, and when you resubmitted your offer, you submitted the exact dollar amount that we'd already said no to. And I don't know how much more telling, and we rejected Erwin's amount, which was, what, $5,000 more, $3,000 more, which should have been an indication that neither one of these were close. As the seller, I don't think that a second appraisal would really have any bearing on what we want out of the property. I mean, if, depending, if it was going to be mortgaged, then the bank, of course, would have to go and get their own appraisal, which would depend upon the loanability, but as far as what we want, we determined our price, and we had a basis to determine that price. I guess the other thing that really solidified all of this, and was the fact that the, all of a sudden, we hear that there was a first right of refusal. Now, everything that, and I'm not an attorney, but everything I ever heard about real estate is that anything to do with real estate has to be in writing. It has to be in writing. It cannot be verbally. It cannot be verbal. And the fact that if, like Bob said, if there was a transaction that had been approved, if there was a motion that was approved, somebody should have been in the city manager's office at least once a week, saying, where is that paperwork? I want to sign it. Do you need my attorney to draw it up for you? And let's get this thing going. And it, I don't know who dropped the ball. We have no record of that. We have no record of even if the ball was put into play. So, you know, I don't think that we've done anything wrong procedurally. I don't think that the city managers, in my mind, reading this letter, the informal conversations, to me, basically meant that we're giving him permission to start the ball rolling, to say, I can't make the decision, the decision is for the council to make, but I've been authorized to talk to you about it. That's just, that's the way my read on it is.
Counsel Hamel.
Just one more thing. If the first right of refusal was made, or voted on and made at that time, and with the lawsuit that happened previously, I would think that the Erwin family would have probably been here the next day also, saying that you can't do that. Or, I'm going to sue you if you do do that. And there's nothing that's in documentation about that, a letter being received stating that fact, that, you know, because they wanted the property too, that seems like that would have happened.
Sorry, Counsel Bowes.
I think it's important that we get this right. And I think, based upon what I've heard, that not undoing this, in terms of this motion to reconsider, is the wrong thing to do. And let me tell you why. I am mindful of the fact that we didn't hear about this right of first refusal until we had been into this process for a very long time. And it is natural for people to say, why wasn't it brought up earlier? I am mindful that you say there was a vote, but why didn't you bring it up earlier? That's my question. Please don't answer it. I am mindful that the original offer that we rejected was offered again despite the city manager's letter. I am mindful of all that. I am mindful that there's a lot of questions that people can ask about the events of September 26, 2005, and thereafter, as to why Mr. Blizzard hadn't come into the city manager's office and say, I want to write a first refusal, let's put it in writing. I am mindful of all the fuzzy history with respect to this. What I am also, what I also can't ignore is Mr. Kitch's article, in which he quotes people and reports words that were said at the city council meeting. I can't ignore Matt Leahy, who I have the utmost respect for, and has a recollection of what occurred that night, because he was there. I can't ignore Mayor Frazier's recollection that he doesn't know whether there was a vote, but he knows that it was on consideration for surplus property, that it wasn't going to get the votes to sell it, that it was going to be leased. And if, in fact, the council said, when voted, you have the right of first refusal, all of the writings and all of what happened afterwards doesn't matter to me. What the city council does as a body binds us. I'm not saying it's a legally enforceable right. I'm not saying that somebody shouldn't have done something else. What I'm saying is that it binds us. And I'm not that city council. I didn't make the decision. And if I'm going to undo a decision of prior councils, then I have to go through the procedures to undo it. I can't ignore it. I can't fuzzy it up with, well, they should have done this, and they should have done that, and because they didn't do that, it's not binding on us. That, to me, ignores what it's our responsibility to do. Because in the end, I think the right path, the right path to treat everybody fairly, because if that was said, and I believe it was, you have the right of first refusal, everybody in that council room that night had the idea, the reasonable idea, that Paul Blizzard had a right of first refusal. And he had, his lease was renewed shortly thereafter. You have that reasonable belief, and you have the right to rely on it. That's what I think. What I think should happen in this case, and it's very difficult, and I've been on the fence about it, I've talked to the city manager, I've gotten all the documents from 2005, I've talked to Matt Leahy personally, I've talked to Mark Frazier personally, I've talked to Michael Kitch personally, about what occurred. It's the first time I heard from you, Ms. Koholik. My apologies for not getting to you. What I believe we should be doing here is reconsidering this, rescinding it, make it clear after that, that there was no enforceable right to a first refusal or anything else, put it back out in some kind of offer acceptance format that doesn't further cloud the issue. And one of the things that upset me about that night is, number one, Henry and Ava are absolutely right. $500,000 and $300,000 isn't even close, which is what swayed me. But one of the things that upset me is that when we came to the meeting, I was simply told that there had been developments, and I wasn't told what the developments were. So I was actually encouraging Mr. Dyer during the timeframes that he was standing up, and said he wanted more time to do an evaluation. I said, were you going to be able to get it done in that amount of time? Do you need any more time? Wanted two weeks or a month. I was encouraging him. To come to find out, these offers had been made. Now, that's water over the bridge. But I think we got to get this right. And I don't think, in these circumstances, we're doing it right if we don't move to reconsider when the evidence that we've got on a promise that we made, reconsider, rescind, undo it, make sure that the process is fair for everybody going forward. My two cents. Thank you.
Well, I guess it's my turn now.
Yeah.
If I'm counting correctly here...
You don't have to take a turn.
If I'm counting correctly here, it looks as though the mayor may be required to provide a decisive vote, or have the option of providing a decisive vote in this matter. And I think the thing that strikes me more than anything about this, I think, is that, and has from the very beginning of these discussions, over these many months, is that each of us, in our own way, have honed in on one particular item, or maybe two particular items, as being the decisive issue in our minds. And as to what the weighing, all the evidence, as it's been made available to us, and trying to decide, okay, what's the backbreaker here? What's the deciding factor between voting one way or the other? And if nothing else, this has proven human nature, I guess, is that we have no consensus in that area as to what the most important item is, or the most important consideration. We're all over the map on this, and I'm alone on my own little island, as well as the rest of you on this. But I will tell you now, and I'll tell you why, that I will not be the fourth vote to reconsider this motion. So if it only gets three, it's going to fail for lack of a fourth vote. And my reason is simply this. This is my critical thing, and perhaps no one else in the world, but this is my critical thing. And that is that while the Blizzards have made an articulate argument, as well as their council, about what they expected as a result of the council's actions in late May, May 26, I think it was, and based on the subsequent letter that the city manager sent out dated June 1. And I can certainly understand and appreciate that there was, in their minds, if nothing else, ambiguity about where the process was at that point in time, and what was expected of them. And perhaps that explains why their subsequent offer came in at the same amount as their first offer. But what I can't get past, from a legal standpoint, is that there is no reason for me to suppose, that I know of, that the people at Erwin Marine had any reason to take what the city manager wrote in this letter as anything but at its face value. And I think they did exactly that. The letter specifically said, "The Laconia City Council requests the highest and best offers be in the hand of the city manager by 4:00 p.m. on Monday, June 8, 2015. Offer should be placed in a sealed envelope." They got this letter, as did Lakeport Landing, and I think that there is no, that they had no reason, that I know of, that I'm aware of, to suppose that this letter meant anything other than what the city manager just said in that letter, and that they made a subsequent offer via sealed bid by the required date, and had no reason to suspect that the process would take any turn other than what was specified in this letter. So that's, that, to me, is the determining factor at this point in time.
Counsel Bear.
My point has been that procedurally, we did some things incorrectly. Among them, that last sentence you just read. "The Laconia City Council requests the highest and best offer to be in hand to the city manager by 4:00." We never made any such request.
And I won't argue that point with you at all. My point is that the people at Erwin Marine had no reason to believe that that sentence wasn't anything but what it says.
But they didn't have the history. I guess I'm just, and I don't want to muck it up, because I've said it once, they didn't have that kind of history that Lakeport Landing had with the bill.
I mean, they took the city manager, in effect, at his word.
I understand what you're saying. I understand your rationale.
Counsel Hamel.
When we asked the city manager to do this, we requested that he discuss this with the owners, whether formally, informally. And in the letter that was sent out, it's pretty plain, like you said, both parties should have been able to read this the same way. For him to solicit or get a price, in a way, I mean, I don't know how else you can do it. You have to send out a document, ask them for their best bid. Now, the appraisal, the new appraisal, had already been done, and they knew, each one knew what that new appraisal would be. So for them to come in at the same amount of money, not a dollar more, realizing the new appraisal, and like Henry said, if it was anywhere close, I would have voted for them too, because they've been there, they've sacrificed for that bill and all that, and I wanted them to have it. Too much disparity. For the same document to be read different ways, you know, it doesn't make any sense. But as David said, you know, he said, we have to do this right. In my mind, there is no right with this whole thing. There is no right. I know what would be right, and that would be for the other business to let Lakeport Landing stay there and operate like they did for the last 30 years. That's what's right. Good neighbor type of thing. But obviously, that ain't going to happen. And it's too bad that businesspeople can't get along, but anyway. But if you just look at the facts, what's in writing, what's not hearsay, it wasn't documented, it wasn't pursued, it should have been pursued by the family with Eileen, and it wasn't done. So we're left with this right now, is what's here. And the bids were done fairly, in my mind. They each had a chance, they each read the letter, one... They each had a chance, they each read the letter, read one different than the other. So I can't see myself reversing it.
Counselor Behr.
One last comment. I believe in our discussions, we did go to the attorneys, asking them if the city could deal exclusively with Lakeport Landing and sell them the property. This was prior to Irwin's making an offer, and we were told we could. It was our option to do it. So it was a matter of choice, but the option was there, and we should have taken it.
But I'll add to that, and I don't know how far I can go, because that was done in non-public, and I don't think that's been released yet.
I think everything's been released.
I don't think so. No. But anyway, that discussion was true, but there was also comments... There was also questions asked if things changed. And if things changed, then what you're saying may not have been able to been done. So...
I think when sealed minutes...
And that isn't out yet.
No, but when you... Under the rules, if you read the rules of non-public, when that issue has been resolved and made public out in the forum, those things are not non-public. In the first place, I don't think the meeting on June 8 actually fell under the requirement for a non-public meeting. Why was it a non-published meeting? We had discussed it at the previous meeting wide open with the two earlier bids, but we go into a non-public, and when we come out, nobody knows what has been said in the meeting.
Well, as I recall, we went under non-public session, somebody refresh my memory if I'm wrong, under the sale...
There's only two reasons to go into non-public.
Sale or lease of city property.
Sale only if it would affect or hurt the actual sale. This had nothing to do with it. We already had a public meeting about the sale and about price, so why was this any different?
Well, I won't argue that point with you, but there was no objection raised at the time.
We didn't know what was going to go on in here.
Well, but the second we got into the meeting and knew what this was about, one of the counselors could have objected at that point in time and said, "We have no business being in non-public," and that objection was not raised.
The fact that nobody made an objection is irrelevant.
Counselor Lippman.
We did talk about terms and conditions that needed to be talked about in non-public session.
Absolutely. Let's not get in an argument about that.
No, I'm just saying, though, that it's not an argument, just...
I know. I know. I don't mean to care.
I call the vote.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Bounds, seconded by Counselor Behr to rescind the vote the city council took on June 28... I'm sorry, June 8 with regard to 21 Elm Street. All those in favor of reconsidering that vote, please raise a hand. All those opposed? Vote is three to three, the mayor votes no, and the motion fails. Okay, we're on to Guilford and Laconia Transfer Station memorandum. Recognize the city manager for a briefing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As some of you may have heard from Guilford's select board meetings, a report in the paper, Guilford's in early discussions about the possibility of handling their own solid waste program through a transfer station or recycling combination. This is strictly putting down our current process, our current approach to the partnership that we have in the Laconia Transfer Station, where the city is responsible for approximately 70% of the cost based on volume, and the town of Guilford is responsible about 30%. This is doing nothing more than putting the formula for Guilford to be continuing to pay back its original capital investment into that property in writing, especially since it was done before either administrator from our communities were there, and a lot of the elected people were there. It gives them a basis for some financials going forward. So no change, just merely a formalizing an existing process relating to the dollars. And the Guilford Select Board have approved this on June 25.
Any questions before we get a motion on the floor? Okay, a motion would be in order to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Guilford and the city of Laconia regarding the handling of revenue from the Laconia Transfer Station as presented and to authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city. Someone make that motion, please. Motion by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion of approving this memorandum of understanding? All's in favor of adoption, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that motion carries. Okay, we're on to budget resolutions. Now, my understanding... This is the second reading. My understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Myers, but the discussions that were going to be happening, unless there's something that's going to happen that I'm not aware of, all have to do with Item A. Is that correct?
No, Item A is specific to the general fund, and others are additional components of the budget that are separate from the general fund, including the sewer fund, Internal Services Fund, special revenue account for Motorcycle Week, the water budget, and the three TIF districts.
But in terms of the amendments that have been proposed to date...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely, yes. There's been no consensus, nothing brought forward, that there was collective agreement on changing anything except in Item A. Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
All right, so let me grab my... So we ought to be able to go through Items B through whatever here pretty quickly, H and I, when we hit to that?
Those first, right.
Because we're dealing with Item A. Take those first. Now, why don't we just take those first and get them out of the way? Now, what are we required to read?
If you make the motion to waive the reading of the resolution in its entirety and read by title only, if you get that approved, then you can just read by title, and I would just recommend you read in the dollar amounts into it for each Item B.
So we can do that on each one of them and do it by somewhere?
You can make one motion to waive the reading for all of the budget resolutions and go by title only, and then just go by title in the dollar amounts.
Okay, including A?
Including A.
Or excluding A, all right. So we would... A motion would be in order to waive the reading of these budget resolutions, A through I, in their entirety, and read by title and amounts only. Counselor Bullock makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that is approved. So first up, make sure I got this in the right order here, would be to adopt Resolution 2015-12, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the sewer fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $3,642,929, less total revenues of 36... I'm sorry, $3,642,929, and a capital outlay of $366,000 even. I have a motion to move that resolution by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bounds. Any discussion of the sewer resolution? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that resolution is adopted. Next up is Resolution 2015-13, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Internal Services Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $1,48,440, less revenue, total revenues of the exact same amount, $1,48,440. Resolution moved by Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion of the Internal Services Fund budget? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that resolution is also adopted. Next up is Resolution 2015-14, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Special Revenue Fund Motorcycle Week for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $171,988, and total revenues of the same amount, $171,988. Resolution moved by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bullock. Any discussion of this resolution? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? No, six to nothing. That resolution is also adopted. Next up is Resolution 2015-15, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $1,896,069, less total revenues of the exact same amount, $1,896,069, plus capital reserve projects of $461,000. This resolution is moved by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bounds. Any discussion of the water fund budget? All those in favor of adoption, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that resolution is adopted. We're on to Resolution 2015-16, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District, Lakeport, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total of appropriation of $2,777, offset by revenues of exactly the same, $2,777. Counselor Bullock moves a resolution dealing with the Lakeport Tax Increment Financing District, seconded by... Somebody, please, Counselor Doyle, thank you. Any discussion of this resolution? All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that resolution is adopted. Next up, a Resolution 2015-17, relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Downtown for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total of appropriation of $185,190, less total revenues of the same amount, $185,190. Resolution is moved by Counselor Behr, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Any discussion of the downtown TIF Increment Financing District budget? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that is also approved. Next up is Resolution 2015-18, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District, Weers, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $11,465, minus total revenues of the same, $11,465. A motion made by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bullock. Any discussion of the Weers Tax Increment Financing District? All those in favor of approving that budget, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that budget is approved. Next up, Resolution 2015-19, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for anticipated grants for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016. A grand total appropriation of $866,334, minus revenues of the same amount, $866,334. By Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Bullock, to approve this resolution with regard to grants. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that resolution is also adopted. And I think that takes us B through I. So now we're back to second reading of the resolution relative to the appropriation for the general fund. And I had a discussion with the city manager about this, and probably for the sake of cleanliness... I'm going to find my piece of paper here. At our last meeting, we reached informal agreement on a number of changes to this particular budget, which I'm trying to find. And so I think what we decided, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Myers, was to get this motion on the floor for the $37,297,601, and then make an amendment to that that would amount to the agreed-upon items at first?
That would be the amended amount based upon these agreed-upon items. So if you like, I can run through...
This is already the amended amount.
That number would reflect if you move in with this package in its entirety, and then that still would allow you the opportunity to make any type of individual motions.
All right, so the first reading was a different number.
The first reading, you're required to do the city manager's proposed budget, regardless of where it may be, you're required to do that one. This number is based on where there was consensus last time to give you a starting point.
Yeah.
All right, so we are not obligated, then, to go back and make a second motion on the original budget amount for the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm going to suggest, then, as a matter of procedure here, is to get a motion on the floor for the resolution as it's before you tonight, and then we would make that open to further amendments. Okay? So everybody understands this motion is to get on the floor the budget that was proposed by the city manager, less the changes that were made at the last meeting.
They were proposed but not made.
That were... Yes. However you want to word that. That were agreed upon by a majority of the council. Is that fair?
Would you like me to run through those quickly, just so everyone's on the same page?
Sure.
Okay, so the changes there was consensus on was to cut $42,500 out of capital outlay for the fire radios, which was half the amount. So the thought was funding half of it this year, funding half next year, and buying the radios at that point. Increasing the Lakes Region Public Access line item under the administration budget by $6,700 to tie into the amount that we were billed for this year. Add $30,000 to the contingency line item, and I'll get to that revenue component that offsets that in a minute. Increase the finance, principal, and interest portion of the budget by $1,200, which ties into window replacement for City Hall, and is basically just a half-year interest payment, or just an interest-only payment, no principal on that, for $1,200. Reduce appropriate fire department line items and overtime by $50,000. A reduction of $100,000 from the school budget. And then we also increased $30,000 in revenue, which came from a return of premium of the city's portion from the New Hampshire Interlocal Trust, which is our health insurance provider, where the DEP Board of the NHIT voted to return surplus. And then we also amended the assessed valuation by $5 million. We increased it by $5 million to a new number of $1,849,646,944. That all blended together brings you to a tax rate increase of, here it's rounded out to a third-digit, 19.3 cents. I think on the original one I sent out, it was 20, and rounded up. So if you adopt the numbers on the page with the Resolution 2015-11, those numbers reflect everything that I just ran through, would get all of these items in in one starting point, and the council would still have the ability to go back and offer up individual amendments on any item going forward.
Okay, to summarize, once we get this motion on the floor, the effect of this at this point in time, at this moment in time, is that we are reducing the school appropriation versus the city manager's recommendation by $100,000. And we have a memorandum from the school board outlining for us that that amount will be taken out of their operating expenses. That was a subject of conversation at our last meeting. Up to them, of course, as to where in their operating expenses that would be reduced. And the sum total, if I'm adding this up correctly, of the reductions that this number represents on the city side of the budget is $84,600. Is that correct?
Doesn't fill in here, does it? Eighty-four.
So we're reducing the city manager's appropriation by the sum total of $184,600 at this point in time by putting this motion on the floor. And then it will be... And then it will be subject to further amendment from any of you. Okay? Okay. So Resolution 2015-11, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the General Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and terminating June 30, 2016, a grand total appropriation of $63,989,938, less total revenues of $26,692,337, leaving a balance to be raised by property taxes of $37,297... I'm sorry. We have a motion to put that resolution on the floor. By Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Okay. Discussion or amendments would be in order. Counselors, Words Four and Five are staring at one another here, so... Counselor Hamel.
Yes. I'd like to recommend that we remove $25,000 in overtime from the fire department lines and put that into the contingency account. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
So we have an amendment to move by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Baer, to remove an additional $25,000 from the fire department overtime budgets, if you will, and transfer it where?
Contingency.
To contingency. So that doesn't move the bottom line at all. It's just a straight transfer. Okay. A motion has been made, and that amendment has been made, and seconded. Discussion? No discussion?
I gotta stand up. I've got a cramp.
You got a cramp?
Okay. All those in favor of Counselor Hamel's amendment, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that amendment is adopted. It does not change the bottom line of the resolution at this point in time. Other amendments or discussion would be germane. Counselor Baer.
I have a couple. On the radios for the fire department, I would like the entire $155,000 removed. I checked with the Finance Department to find out how much money was spent during the year on repairing the radios. I believe the sum total of three hun... I'm sorry. Wrong page. $795 was spent the whole year, and we're gonna spend $155,000 for new ones. They had a budget of $3,200 for maintenance, and they couldn't use that. That's just my... Just my thought.
Okay. So let me make sure I've got this correct here. This would be out of the capital outlay budget? Is that correct?
Yes.
Effectively reducing it 42,500 more.
Forty-two-five is the number.
It's a motion to reduce the capital outlay budget by another $42,500, which would in effect zero out that appropriation for fiscal '16.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's a motion for Counselor Baer. Is there a second?
This is to go to contingency, correct?
No, this is a straight cut.
Straight cut.
This is to reduce the overall budget by $42,500 by taking the remaining appropriation for fire radios out of the capital outlay budget. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it to continue the discussion.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Lippman. Discussion of this amendment. Counselor Lippman.
I'd like to ask the manager if you can fill us in a little bit conceptually on the rationale for putting money aside on the radios. I mean, excuse me, the ultimately why we're replacing them. My recollection of the presentation, it wasn't just about repairs, it was about modernizing our frequencies and having all the radios compatible with one another. Is that correct?
It was having them compatible. I believe also the current model we have now is not being supported anymore, and this one allows the frequencies across multiple agencies, which I think I had sent an email to the council last week at some point. And I probably, I will defer to Chief Erickson on specifics, but these are the frontline radios that go with them on duty, off duty, traveling, respond, all aspects of the state, up into Maine, Vermont, connect with state police, fish and game, municipal police departments. If I didn't say state police, I should say state police. So a number of agencies, and it's really an important tool. But I certainly will see if the chief wants to come up with anything.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
How old are the existing radios?
I'm gonna have to look to the chief for specifics on that.
Chief Erickson?
Good evening. The radios were purchased through a state grant across the entire spectrum of the state in 2007. Unfortunately, the technology will be no longer taken care of through Motorola, so any problems we start having with these radios, we'll have to start replacing them individually at a cost of roughly $3,300 apiece. One of the key components with the radios, though, the current radios are 4.5 watts of transmitting power. The newer radios are 6.5 watts of transmitting power. If you happen to listen to us at all on the radio, we have a tremendous problem with portable radios getting back to the mutual aid center, specifically in any of the bigger buildings, the hospital, 25 Union Avenue, places like that. We're constantly having to have people call out on a portable radio out to the street and have the person on the street relay the information. And if we don't, if we only have two people at the call, there's no one on the street to do on the relay. So this is a considerable safety issue, as well as an operational issue. But yet, we don't spend a lot of money fixing them, but as of this year, if they break, we have to replace them. So we'll be replacing...
Counselor Bowles? Can you use your microphone, please?
If we left the 42.5 in there, you would have options to still shop around, get any reduced costs that you might find out there in terms of the course of looking at these radios? Are you limited to what, to one brand, or what you decide?
The paperwork that the manager gave you was just for one specific brand. We're actually doing trial tests on quite a few different varieties. Motorola, Kenwood, Icon. We're looking at different operating radios. We're also looking at the potential where we may have to put repeaters in to even transmit in such places at the hospital and 25 Union Avenue.
So you'd be vigilant about getting us the biggest bang for our buck, right?
We tried to get this replaced with grants, but unfortunately, there was no grant money. But yeah, we have not gone out the bid yet.
Okay. Counselor Hamel?
I'd like to make an amendment to Counselor Baer's motion, and that would be to take the, remove the 42,500 and put it in contingency.
Into where?
Contingency. And the reason for that is I would like to see further investigation by other companies into the radios, and then at that time, the council can have the authority to remove it from contingency and be able to purchase those radios. You know, one bid from Osbe Mountain.
They're not, correct me if I'm wrong, the way we've done this now, the appropriation that's in there now is for only one-fourth of the cost.
One-half.
Half.
Well, no, it was $155,000, of which originally, a portion of that was coming from Motorcycle Week fund. So if we move that to contingency with the intent that at the end of the year, we'll carry that forward, and we'll continue to explore. We're not buying them right now because the thought was to save up for two years. So I think we're very comfortable with doing that, as long as we know with this discussion that we are gonna provide additional information over the next 12 months and target it for that.
So you want me to withdraw?
Proceedurally, we have an amendment to the amendment on the floor made by Counselor Hamel. Is there a second to the amendment to the amendment?
I will.
With regard to the transfer. Counselor Baer seconds the amendment. So now we're discussing the amendment to the amendment, which is to not cut the money from the budget, but to transfer it to contingency. Any discussion of that amendment? Counselor Lippman.
I think it's a distinction without difference in the final analysis, but I think the, you know, we do, are going to have to replace seven-year-old radios, or eight, nine-year-old radios.
We purchased them in 2007. Unfortunately, actually, when they came to us, they were already five years old.
So, I mean, you know, either way, it works, I think practically, so I'll support the amended proposal.
I'm gonna interrupt the council for a second here and entertain a motion to extend the meeting time to 10:30 PM.
Geez.
Moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion of extending the meeting time to 10:30 PM? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. Six to nothing. Sorry to interrupt. Okay. So any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Counselor Doyle?
I, you know, like Henry said, it's the same amount of money regardless. I would personally like to see it left as a placeholder, that it's there for the radios, but as long as we know that that's what it's there for, I can go along with it. I just would, my own preference would be to have it as its own account.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Okay. Everybody know what we're voting on now? We're voting on Counselor Hamel's amendment to, in effect, transfer the remaining appropriation in capital outlay of $42,500 to contingency. That's the effect of this. Counselor Lippman?
I just wanna, with the further understanding that, based upon further research, it would, if we didn't go into contingency, that would be carried forward into that specific account? Is that what you're saying?
You mean, that count for the radios?
Say that again? I didn't follow that.
We're saying that we're putting it in contingency based on further research at the end of the year. If we haven't invaded contingency for other reasons, and there's that $42,500 left over, we're gonna move it-
It would be a carry-forward.
Carry-forward for radios.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and the amendment to the amendment is adopted, which brings us back to the amendment itself. Any further discussion on the amendment itself, which now has no effect on the bottom line? Alls in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. Vote is five. Alls opposed, raise a hand. We're voting on the amendment as amended.
Which was my amendment.
Yes.
How can we vote for both?
We had to vote on the amendment, the amendment first.
Yeah, we voted to put it in contingency.
That's the vote now.
Yes.
That's what your amendment has been amended to be now.
All right. I didn't think it was-
Your voting, yes?
Yeah.
All right. Vote is six to nothing, and that amendment has been approved.
Okay. I have one more.
Okay. Go ahead.
The windows. I understand from Finance that we have $347,772 in the city manager's operational trends, which I believe land and buildings comes under that.
The non-cap reserve, yes.
Right. And I don't see why the windows, which were $60,000, should go out to a loan. I can't, $60,000 isn't gonna hurt us. You've got $350,000 sitting there in the land and buildings account, unless you're saving it for something.
So you're saying, why borrow the money? Let's just spend, buy, fix the windows out of that account.
Yeah, 'cause when you, once you borrow money, even though it's not a lot of money, you're still gonna be paying interest on it.
Okay. So give me some help here. Proceedurally, how would we accomplish that?
Can I give you a quick editorial and then do that? So I'm not opposed to that. One thing is funny, Donna and I were looking today, and she brought to my attention, when the purpose of that reserve account was set up back in 2005, I think they were using 2005 numbers, so it was tied to unanticipated projects in the $5,000 to $20,000 range. So we were talking today about updating that to 2016 numbers anyway. So no problem cutting the 1,200 if the intent of the council is to wanna use $60,000 out of the account. We would bring you just one intermediate step of updating the guidelines, if you will, for that account as a housekeeping step, if you will, first, and then go ahead and move on to the second one at a later point.
We have done major windows in the past. I mean, we've done the community center, we've done moves, and we've done the SAU.
So we just wanna, we just wanna bring us into compliance. So we noticed it today, and we think it's good business to update that to reflect what we're spending out of it.
I have no objections.
So Counselor Baer is in effect moving, then, to remove from the budget $1,200 in principal and interest payments.
Correct.
Would you take an amendment to that, to move that to contingency as well?
$1,200.
The $1,200?
The $1,200?
Yes.
So none of these changes the bottom, right?
Correct.
None of these changes.
Not so far.
No. Okay.
Are you okay with that motion?
Yes.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Baer moves to reduce the principal and interest budget in the finance budget by $1,200 and transfer an equal amount to the contingency budget, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Okay. Again, we have a no, a zero net effect on the bottom line. Any discussion? And the understanding, I'm presuming by voting for this, is we're gonna pay cash for the windows. Correct? All those in favor of that amendment, please raise a hand. Vote is six to nothing, and that amendment is adopted as well.
Said you could-
Counselor Baer?
I'm not changing anything, but I would like some information. As you know, we're in the process of building a fire department, a new building, and it would be nice to have an update on cost. I know we have a committee, but we've heard nothing. I understand that the contingency fund has already been used up, so I'm curious as to where we stand financially and if we foresee some problems down the road.
Anybody on that committee? Counselor Hamel, care to comment?
Sure. As of Friday, we are okay. The, I'm trying to think. We did go through the contingency, but we have made savings in other areas that allows us to have freed up some money for unexpected things as of this moment. Off the top of my head, I really can't tell you how much that is. We just freed up, I think it was like $18,000 on a difference of putting plywood on the walls or using strapping. And it was all because of a warranty item of the vinyl siding. That was further looked into, and we've got a warranty statement from Certainty, the company that's doing the siding, saying that it's okay to do the strapping, so we saved that money. And there's other items that we've saved considerable money on for the project. So we're okay.
The biggest one was about $40,000 on savings on the financing costs.
On the bonding.
Yes.
On the financing costs.
Yeah. We allowed, I think it was $50,000.
$50,000 for bond council or whatever.
It came in at, by around 10 or, in that 10-ish?
When we prorated out amongst all the areas that we were issuing debt on, that was the prorated amount for that one.
So we saved that amount also. But you are right, the contingency fund is theoretically gone.
We're about to enter the part of the project where there's some-
Unknowns.
Some greater unknowns, so we have held off on certain purchases to-
Would you keep us abreast?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other, would the councilers propose any other amendments to the proposed General Fund budget?
To the budget?
I'm sorry?
To the budget?
Yeah.
Yes. Any further amendments?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bowles has an amendment.
As I think I indicated when we had these general discussions, I think that we've gotta be very careful about what we're doing with the school budget. I think $50,000 is a reasonable amount to reduce the school budget by. I don't think, as I think I've expressed, $100,000 is reasonable in that I can see the need for some reduction, but, you know, 50, 100, it sort of becomes arbitrary with respect to how we cut the number and how we get there. I guess, before I finish, I wanna ask, and can I, members of the school board at this time? Why you made the change from your contribution to the Building Trust to staffing and curriculum initiatives? Is that an appropriate question for me to ask at this point in time?
Yes, you may ask. Mr. Cormier, or would anybody like to answer that question?
When you came in here before, you talked about how you were gonna reach this number of $100,000 or $150,000. You indicated you were going to go after the Building Trust Fund and fund it that way. Okay. So I'm just interested in the rationale from the change from that mode of reaching the number, whatever it is, and curriculums and-
Well, the council asked for that.
No, I-
He's trying to find out how they did it, though.
Yeah. I think it sounds a little split.
How they came up.
Originally, the question came from council quite a while- Originally, the question came from council quite a, quite a while back. If we were going to have a $150,000 cut, where would we recommend the cut? And at that time, we came back with, we would take it $100,000 out of our building fund, and $50,000, we'd ask you to raise our revenue, and we would withdraw it from the health insurance fund. The, at the last meeting, the council strongly suggested to the school board that, that wasn't satisfactory to them, and that if they were to, if, if the reduction was for $100,000, but it had to come out of operating fund and not touch the two capital funds, how would that impact the schools? So, we went back last week, had a meeting with our budget and personnel committee to discuss that, and it was a quite lengthy discussion about not just the effect on the current year, but how it would affect future years. So, it really hinged upon, if you cut $150,000 and we take it out of those funds, it affects future years, because future budgets would be based on a budget that was lower. So, it, it was prudent for the, for the, for the school district to consider a lesser amount and making it out of the operating funds. They, so they, they recommend, they, they said, they were answering your question. If you cut $100,000 and it had to come from operating, how would it impact students? And the answer is, we would have to look at a couple vacant positions that we still currently have, that we've been holding off on filling until we have a budget resolution, and we would have to postpone a curriculum initiative at the high school.
So, I guess my, my question is, out of the budget, you really couldn't find another place to get that $100,000 in terms of anticipation of teacher salaries increases, students, students, special ed, whatever the factors came in, other than look at personnel and curriculum options? Does that?
Correct. We've looked, we've looked at our, where we were in hiring, we're right on target with all the positions we've, we've had to fill so far. We have one and a half positions left to fill this summer. We've held off on those two until we've, we have a budget, and that's really the only place we've got left. It would have an impact on students. These two positions support students. They're not classroom teachers, per se. They're, they're, they're positions that support students with, that are having difficulties. They're not special ed.
Okay. So, I take them at their word, and I think that $50,000 cut to their budget reduces that kind of one-on-one impact to the most important people in the city of Laconia, the students. Thank you.
So, are you making an amendment, Counselor?
Yes, I'm moving to amend it.
$50,000?
$50,000.
All right. Counselor, Counselor Bounds moves to, to raise the appropriation for the school district by 100, by, I'm sorry, by $50,000.
By $50,000.
So, it would, it would add, it would add $50,000 to the general appropriation and add $50,000 to the amount to be raised by taxes. Okay, everybody understand that? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Counselor Lippman seconds the motion, discussion. Go ahead.
You know, I think a couple things. The, the points that Mike Pearson made earlier this evening, as a private citizen, he and I had a conversation, and I understand where they're, where he's coming from on this. I also, you know, I think that the council, in a number of different respects, in terms of how the tax cap formula is administered, how we're sharing debt service, you know, have been, I don't wanna say the word generous, that's not the right term, but have been interpreted in a fashion that, that benefits on a percentage growth basis, the school district, more than it otherwise would if you took a literal, another interpretation of it. And, you know, we're talking about at $100,000, .262 percent of, of spending and .51 percent of the amount to be raised by taxes. And, you know, I just feel that, you know, looking forward, we do have concerns, but we also have, I think, some, if I felt that we were putting ourselves in a position where if things got a little tougher, that we couldn't find our way through it, I would support your motion, but I think, you know, looking at the big financial picture and looking at our reserve funds and looking at different things, I think we can manage through next year at a 0 percent, you know, CPI.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've worked together before, as Counselor Hamel said, you know, when the SAU needed to replace the boilers, I think we took at least half of the cost out of the building reserve fund, so, I mean, if you run into an unexpected repair, you know, there was no fight over that, it was just done. And I think that's the spirit that we're approaching this from, and so I'm comfortable that, that we can work together to overcome next year's financial challenge, based on what I, what I know today.
May I ask you a question there?
Sure.
Just to clarify. So, from a finance committee standpoint, your committee, am I understanding you to say that, at least from the perspective of now, if, if we do encounter the expected hurdle in terms of the CPI, that, that you would expect to make up those funds out of the unreserved fund balance?
Not necessarily reserve fund balance, but, you know, we have a number of different things that we've set aside. For example, you know, when we manage on the city side, people who leave, we try to make it balanced by taking some from the department and some from the reserve fund. You know, we, I think we've been doing it roughly on a 50/50 basis. If, you know, if we needed to do it one year, you know, 40, 60, or some other number, we probably could do that to, to make it work. So, I do get the idea that we're raising the, raising the hurdle here, but, you know, I do think that, on the other hand, that we've accomplished a lot under the tax cap, we've accomplished a lot in working together, and, you know, I think we've gotta balance the competing interests in the city here in terms of those that are having a hard time still in affording their taxes, and while, you know, this doesn't amount to a lot of dollars, it's the same reason that we're concerned about it from managing the budget, which is the compounding effect, the $14 or whatever was given as an example, it compounds year after year for people who have to pay their property taxes.
Exactly right.